Welcome to the City of Loving Grove Regular Assembly Meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. Thank you. Please, clerk, will you please call the roll of the three council members who are on the record as my tenor?
Councilmember Snow?
Here.
Councilmember Gastel?
Here.
Councilmember LeBaron?
First, I want to say thank you to everybody who's in attendance. Awesome, and I am here, Councilmember Barrett.
Mayor Protan Mendoza? Mayor Vasquez?
Here.
Mayor Vasquez, we have a forum of the city councils.
Uh, thank you so very much. I would like to ask Councilmember Gastel to lead us in the way.
Councilmember LeBaron, focusing on item 1B, that's the payments and demand. Uh, this item will be taken up after the reports the councils are complete. Uh, are there any other changes to the agenda tonight?
As I'm there, there are no other changes to the minutes agenda.
Thank you. Tonight, we do not have any presentations, so we will be directly into the general public comment portion of the meeting. Where is the general public comment portion of this meeting? The public may express their concerns not pertaining to items under the heading tonight. Please note that in accordance with state law, the city council will not permit it to respond to any of the comments expressed by the public. If appropriate, staff will be directly to follow up with the speakers or the topic being brought back to the city council for consideration at a future date. Loving Grove, Minnesota Code Chapter 2.14, .1 by 0. All remarks must be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes. When speaking, please observe the green now and red light. I don't have the podium. The red light indicates that it is time for the speakers to approach the podium to begin speaking. Do you hear any speaker's words? Uh, thank you. At first step, we have Ralph Chuddy, followed by Karen Keen.
Hi, my name is Ralph Chuddy. I'm at 7448 Civic Avenue in Long Island. And I just wanted to make sure that the city council was aware that just for the last week and a half, we've had a full tent city spring up right in my backyard at the Agent Lot at 7439 Broadway. And I'm just wondering, is anything being done about this filth and mess that is nearly covering the entire property? Both ends of the parcel, both east end, west end of the parcel. There's no sanitation, no trash pickup, no quarterly oversight of anything that happens in the backyard, no security protecting the surrounding neighborhoods. I personally observed these individuals yearning and defecating right at my backyard fence. So I just want to remind the city council that this is a health hazard and a safety hazard. The kids and families could be at risk in neighborhood. I understand that, uh, after speaking to Mr. Romero over at code enforcement, that the owner is, uh, he's allowing this tent city to be established. And that, uh, as part of that, he should be facing daily outside patients and fines. Well, I'm wondering, is it working? Is that true? Uh, has the owner actually begun paying out fines? I'd like to know how much? And what code enforcement does the owner face? And what are the consequences for failure to act? And then what action the city might be taking to clean up this mess?
Thank you, Mr. King. Uh, next, we have John L. Wood.
John L. Wood. First, uh, I'll talk about Water District. I know we have more information over this, but I regret that all water facilities in the municipality are at risk of attack. But since we have more information, we don't know this. We're never going to know about it. I know nobody wants to do anything about it. Nobody wants to go to Water District. I went to a place five years. I didn't have to go there. I wanted to know what was up with the water. Because the person that was supposed to go worked up enough loss accident. And the traffic was so heavy when he was coming home from work. Well, he should have thought about it before he just forgot. Anyway, uh, there's a fistwheel trailer unhooked, uh, on Pebble Boulevard. It's an off-white color that has crossed from Edgill Office outside Pebble Boulevard. It used to be taken care of. We had another one just left last night. Uh, there was a regular travel trailer that was disconnected. It changed two of the outside wheels so nobody could pull it. It was a car because you can bust a lock, cut a pedal link, that's a gear. That's the person who had the truck. But the thing, more of these trailers just stopped and parked. And I haven't heard anything on, uh, the people. The old Mesa Park.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Karen Keen, followed by Brandon.
Good afternoon. Uh, a couple of questions I have.
If you could please try to speak directly to the mic so that we can hear what you're saying. And if you have to, you can just take the mic. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Um, I want to talk about, uh, the, what about the streets that we address. Uh, more concerned about routes than places. Um, also, I think that we need to take a lot of, because there's some presidential trouble. I think that last time I was talking to a guy, he was part of the committee that was helping me with the public meetings. A little bit of a problem back. Um, anyone who repairs a trailer that are on the street that is actually being put to work for the city? Uh, pretty much share the public's motive. But there's somebody that's, um, always in that. So about all the points that, whatever it's another. Um, and then for the moment, I mean, right now, my understanding that somebody went to the car wash. Like, they're not here, but somebody else wants to go to the car wash. And there's a pain in, there are people that have tried to do it, that have been through the twenty years. If you go to the car wash, it could be a way, quite, that's what I'm going to do with the car wash. As for, um, the party markets, I see them spending about $100, $180 for six cabinets. I've done research on all the other party markets in, in, uh, Monroe, uh, Great Valley. Uh, Mesa, San Tito, the party markets, they have three or four cabinets per station. We have one station that's just empty. That's half a million dollars that they're going to be, really paying us or pay the street people to help pay us.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Renee Hammond, followed by John Everett.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. So before I get into my concerns, um, can I remind some of you up there that, uh, testing people or even sending, even sending testers out to record reaction uh, should be considered criminal and should be labeled domestic terrorism. It's harassment. Just a reminder. So my concerns of the creek is still, like, not running or anything, just sitting there. I had to repair my foot from a whole mosquitoes that I got bit by. There's mosquitoes swarming in that creek, so we need to get it cleaned out. Um, the crosswalk at the breezeway, the light that's supposed to flash when you hit the button is not bright enough. Even at night, you can barely see it. So with the new apartments going, which are really nice, um, we need that crosswalk light working brighter. And, uh, oh, if you see me sloppy walking, that's what I learned in the clinic, in the, um, pain clinic I went to. Um, if you're walking all stiff and everything, then that's for dancing too. If you're all stiff and everything, you're not going to help yourself. You just gotta let yourself go. I'm serious about the testing people to record reaction, especially when it's, um, a council member in her, oh, sorry. These are her, um, friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Everett, followed by, uh, by Corey Ricks.
Good evening. My name is John Everett, a twenty-year resident here in Loving Grove. This is like only my second meeting that I've come to. I should be making myself accountable too for not showing up and showing our interest in my community. But my question to my is, why, I've been here for twenty years and I've seen things get done either very slowly or not at all. And I want to make sure that our revenue tax dollars are being used in a good fashion and that our leaders here, the council, the mayor, are all accountable for the monies coming in and what those monies are going to. Because what got me here today is it's been over twenty years and my part of Benita Street, where the new Benita Police Place Development is coming up right now, the street is finally going to be getting, gotten done, that I understand. But my question is that it took twenty years for it to be done once. And it wasn't by our city town, our city council or planning department. So I'm going to make myself more accountable in asking you why these things are not being done in a proper manner and how our monies are being spent. This is very important that we put our trust in you to make sure that these things get done in our city where you don't have to run around and huge fire holes or broken streets, lights, anything you want to say. We should be getting these things done. So I'm just here to put our council on notice that I'm going to be more proactive and make sure that those monies are spent in a proper manner that's going to make sure every resident here can at least be happy in some way that these things are getting done. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Corey Ricks, followed by Matt Mahinsky.
Good evening. My name is Corey Ricks. I'm just here to serve some legal papers on time for my bills. He owes my client, Mia, about thirty thousand dollars and she's got to show up on June twenty fourth and answer questions about her assets until the court is over.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Matt Strick, Matt Stricksey, followed by Dan Danier. I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm Matt Strick, I'm a chief negotiator for Assemis Bargaining. I'm glad to see most a lot of my members here that we've been bargaining. Um, maybe a year this June since we first sat down at the table. Um, tonight I want to hit on about four topics. One is about economic proposals. Two is about closed session. Three is about a forty-hour work week. Four is about winter holiday closure, the last of your time. The dress says their job is holiday. So economic proposals, number one. Assemis wants me to record. On May seventh, the city manager requested that Assemis accept, um, immediately to start bargaining urgently for our economic proposals. Assemis accepted. Right then and there, we said we'd accept it ahead of everything else and make it a priority. The city manager promised to get all those proposals to us, so we can start negotiating. Two and a half months later, we still have not seen the economic proposals. We have not seen any, and we still have not known what we're going to get presented. I know tomorrow you've got your, your budget meeting, but I want to be clear with this. That the union is not slowing down the economic on your end. I will also let you know, as I told your negotiator, on June thirteenth to June twenty seventh, I will not be around to negotiate or communicate at all. Um, just letting you know, I could actually take a little time off, which I'm allowed to do. But we have sat around waiting for these economic proposals for twenty eight months. We don't have wages, we don't have the healthcare benefits, the license waivers, retirement, the standby pay, or any other financial related ones, we are waiting for that. Two, closed session. I want to be very clear about this. I'm concerned that there is still no closed session discussion to review our bargaining issues over the past several months. You had one previously, and we are very grateful for that. The employees and myself have a fractured relationship with the city manager, I want to be clear. We need to know that the city council is involved because we have, um, got an edict to the city manager, what she wants, which we don't necessarily share the same value. And we believe the council will give a different direction. That's why we hope that you will go to closed session and review these proposals. It is important. Next, forty-hour work week. Our members right now do not work a forty-hour week. They're not paid for working forty hours a week. They are asking to work forty hours a week. These folks back here would like to see more work done in the city. Our folks are willing to step up and work forty hours a week. We're being told that probably the city doesn't want them to work forty hours a week, even though they want to do that. Two, winter holiday closure. There was a survey done by the city. Our members were very clear with me that they would like to, which they normally do anyway, to work during the winter break. When the city shuts down, their work doesn't end. They still stand up, they still come in here. They would like to work, and if they have to take a time off, just like everywhere else, they're glad to use their vacation times to do it. But they'd rather not shut down all the services to the streets, the park, the sewers, the sanitation, all that. They would like to do the job. So they're asking not to close down, last but not least, a minute of time for says the jobs. But thank you.
Uh, thank you so very much. Next, we have Mayor Dennis Free, and, um, this will conclude our public comment portion of the meeting.
Can you hear me? This is Danary. Um, I want to thank Izzy and his crew for, uh, the cleanup on, uh, the awards on Port Avenue. I'm sure that wasn't real pleasant, but I'm glad you've been there. And also your follow-up on condition to San Miguel. Appreciate your, your response. Um, I would like to, uh, hopefully have the camp, uh, the leaders, gentlemen, here, smoke a long Pacific, which is actually on Broadway, addressed as soon as possible. Um, I hope the city can be more proactive in this. It seems somewhat counterproductive when the city is trying to lure businesses into our storefronts and our, along Broadway. But we allow this thing to be our advertisement. If someone drives down that street, I wouldn't want to open a business on Broadway when I see things like that. Um, and I'd also like to encourage me, the city council, maybe in La Mesa, to look at how many roads are being smurfing in La Mesa. It's crazy. You know, I agree with John. I've lived on Benita Street for close to forty years. The other end of Benita Street's been done like three times. Our end of the street, it hasn't been done. And I don't know how this is through the backs or who lives on the other end of Benita Street, maybe it isn't done. But, um, that's, that's all, that's all I got to say tonight. Thank you for everything. Hopefully, we'll get to that camp. Uh, if you don't, let's go.
Uh, thank you so very much. And while we cannot respond to the comments that were, um, provided tonight, what I will do is I'll turn it over to staff to see if they can, um, provide any clarification regarding those comments before we move on to our next item under the board.
Here, city councilmembers. So regarding the vacant property on Broadway across from Goodfellas, yes, the property owner is in daily food pints of a thousand dollars a day um, to end up his property and to secure his site. Um, we will, we have to allow him a certain amount of time to take care of his property. If you don't, if he doesn't, our next step is to get a receiver, put it in a receiver ship, to get that property up. And then we would then ensure that he pays his debt back. Very similar to what we did, uh, previously on that same property when I had two little structures operating. We do have some tools, we just have to take a measure of which is. Um, Ms. Wood, um, Ms. Mendoza is actually the representative to the Water District this year, and she has actually been in the community. So if you stick around at the end, she will get updated. So Mayor Protan is in on that last week. She was on a water tour to get better and quicker with the water policy and how it works. Negative water policy. And then regarding the streets, um, this coming year, the council littered this year about two, about two point five, I'm looking at the public short, two point five now, about two point five million dollars to do twenty-one segments of streets this coming summer, so there will be a large street project. A lot of that is due to ARCA funds, um, to get the streets that are under twenty-five PCI. Just very quickly, because I know I can't take a lot of time, it's a terrible timing. The streets are rated on a scale of hundred to zero. Any streets that are under twenty-five PCI are very, very expensive to fix. This new ARCA money helped us actually kick off probably about twenty-five street segments. About seventy-one of those ARCA funds. So we're very glad to have such a good experience. And here, I think that is all of the, the comments. Oh, we, we are having a local priority workshop tomorrow. Everybody in this audience is invited to attend. Um, there is an exercise for residents that we have done every two years, or every year. So we can't find three, we are doing a council workshop that helps set priorities for the next coming year. Um, and so you're invited to attend to make sure that your priorities marry with the council priorities and marry with the staff. And that's three, about five thirty, this, this building. Who is it? Thank you, Mr. Everett.
Uh, thank you so very much. And so we will now move on to the consent calendar. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar? Um, we have set aside item one B. Item two? Can you give us a second? And we have a motion in the second. Before we please call the roll.
Yes, the motion is made by Mayor Protan Mendoza with a second by Councilmember Gastel. You will call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, you have a.
You stop it.
Councilmember Gastel? All right. Mayor Protan Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of four to one.
Uh, thank you so very much. Item number two is the consider, to consider a pill number AA two dash two zero zero dash zero zero seven regarding the planning commission who vote a conditional use permit number C E dash two two zero dash zero 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 one. Under consideration is the wireless communication facility that would include a seventy-foot mono broad beach tower and associated equipment at the property located at six nine seven zero San Miguel Avenue. That's APN four seven nine dash two four zero dash zero six dash zero zero. And the residential will accommodate on its own. So the council members tonight will leave clearly in sales, but this is a rare item. And so I will, uh, adopt sign for those council members, uh, just that. I, I'd like to call upon each council member to identify their conflicts of interest and then they choose themselves. Full start with Councilmember Snow.
Hi, uh, thank you, everybody, for attending. Um, I live just adjacent to the proposed property. There is like zero feet between the high property and the property where this is located. So I do have a conflict of interest, so I will seek to recuse myself.
Thank you. Uh, and then I believe, council, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protan Mendoza?
Uh, yes, I also have.
Thank you. And then Matt, if it pleases the chair, I'll vote for the remainder of the council. Um, Councilmember LeBaron, any conflicts of interest or expertise communications to announce? No, then, um, thank you. Councilmember Gastel, any, uh, conflicts of interest or expertise communications to announce?
No conflicts of interest. I, I did, um, speak with a representative from AT&amp;T about, about it, probably in Europe.
Thank you. And Mayor Vasquez, any conflicts of interest or expertise communications?
Uh, I have not had any conflicts or any expertise communications regarding this particular item.
Thank you. Um, before we move forward, I just wanted to give a brief introduction of the appellate process since we don't do a heck of a lot of appeals, um, from the planning commission decisions. Um, this one in particular is a decision coming from the planning commission in which the planning commission approved the project. Um, and that's important to keep in mind because you are not the originating body who's deciding the matter or deciding whether the appeal should be granted or denied based on the merits of the appeal as outlined in the staff report. And if you have any questions about that, then you're happy to answer it. In this case, because we only have three council members present to make the decision, uh, any denial of the appeal will. any denial of the appeal will have to be unanimous with the three of you. Any, any other vote will be, will be considered to uphold the planning commission's decision. You have the opportunity to send the matter back to the planning commission. If you'd like to give further instruction, you can deny the appeal, you can grant the appeal. So I'm here for any questions, if you have them as you go. And that's a brief introduction, thank you. Thank you so very much. And so I'll check whether there's any privacy of free have provided all of the notices required by law and if those have been given. And if the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents have those been provided?
Madam Mayor, all notices as required by law have been provided. And the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents have been provided and on file with the city post office.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the city attorney to ask council if they have any. And so with all of the disclosures provided and all of the documents on file, we will now open the appeal hearing. I'll introduce Michael Fellow, the community development manager, to present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. A pleasure to be here to present this item. Before we get started, I'd like to disclose the item five hundred seventy-five shares of AT&amp;T stock. Who is the applicant in this project that is currently valued at seventeen dollars twenty-seven cents a share? I do not believe the stock ownership constitutes conflict or request for the proposed. As mentioned, this item is an appeal of the planning commission approval. For this presentation, we're going to review the history of the project, the location, details of the project, planning commission decision, provide for a responsive appeal, and then post with the staff recommendation. Next item. Previous item, no, we are eating. Thank you. Here we have a project timeline. This conditional use permit application, also known as a C E, is for a wireless communication facility that was originally submitted on December one of two thousand twenty-two. It went through a series of reviews at recent levels where staff and the applicant addressed a variety of issues. On November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, the application was determined to be committed to a January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four planning commission. Unfortunately, the meeting was canceled due to a lack of support, and the applicant request died, it would be delayed until later in the year. On April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, planning commission held a public hearing. This is the public comments and voted to condition the approval of the project. This subject property is located in the northwest part of town, on the north side of San Miguel Avenue, which is in Massachusetts Avenue, San Miguel Avenue. The property is developed with the church building that is located towards the front of the property, about forty feet from San Miguel Avenue. There is a large park throughout the building, it's near the church. Next item. This subject property is a three point six nine acre particular lot with two hundred feet of frontage on San Miguel Avenue. It's about six hundred and forty feet. The property is a moral link that is residential, will accommodate zone. And the general plan we have used to designate the property is public institutional. Here we have a fine elevation of the church, which is northwest of San Miguel Avenue. As mentioned, the planning commission held a public hearing and approved the wireless communication facility that includes a seventy-foot tall tower disguised as a broadleaf tree. Also approved as a forty-five eighteen-foot C U block equipment enclosure that would house equipment for the, for the wireless facility. The applicant has clarified that the generator is no longer proposed with the project. The applicant would also be finding seven Virginia live oak trees that grow fifty to seventy feet tall, two sick more trees for their native equivalent to either type of trees. There would also be shrubs they'd brought up or added to the site. Here we have the layout that was approved by planning commission. The tower is shown in the yellow and green colors with the equipment enclosure shown in orange. The old trees are shown in solid green color and sick more trees in green and purple. The right is a zoom site plan focusing on locations of the tower and equipment building. Next item. Here's a similar perspective with the satellite view of the property. Here we have photos facing the left. The left photo shows the approximate location of the equipment shelter, and the right photo shows where the tower was created. Next item. These photos focus on location where planning commission conditions that a live oak tree be planted in a park. This elevation details the height of the proposed tower and antennas along with other details of the facility. Staff recommended planning commission adopt conditions related to design and design of the model we provide, the mono broadleaf tower to ensure the city receives a higher quality of power. The conditions include requirements for branch density, length of branches relative to antennas, canopy shape, freedom of transport, and branch height, and use of antennas on. Planning commission was able to make the required findings to approve the project, including that the use is compatible with the neighborhood or community. The use is not detrimental to the health, safety, convenience, and overall welfare of persons residing or working in the facility. The use complies with performance standards according to section seventeen point two four point zero eight zero. The use is consistent with the applicable provisions of the particular resident district with policies and standards of the general plan. The findings are shown here on the slide. On May first, two thousand twenty-four, staff received an application for an appeal of the planning commission approval. After reviewing and considering points in the appeal, staff developed responses. The first objection is that the project is in conflict with the general plan. With staff's recognition, the planning commission found that the project is consistent with the general plan as there are those who have pulled alternative locations for the desired coverage that would blend better with the surrounding area. Also, the general plan recommends design as a property for public institutional uses, not for residential uses. Further, this property had previously been approved for a wireless project PDP two, PDP I ten zero six zero three for a wireless facility that was consistent with the general plan. The appeal asserts that there was insufficient environmental review. However, staff believes that environmental review and statutory requirements were sufficient. Is the project is already developed site within and adjacent to and existing according to law. And staff does not perceive any significant effects related to traffic noise, air quality, biology, or water quality. Planning commission determined that the project was categorically exempt from CECLAS as a class three section fifteen three oh three new construction for conversion to small structures exemptions found in the CECLAS guidelines. These guidelines include examples of structures that qualify for the fifteen three oh three exemption that include that are not limited to utilities and accessory structures. No exceptions to the exemptions found in the CECLAS guidelines are applicable to this project. The appeal asserts in the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six that local governments can limit locations and designs with a recent approach. Staff believes this is, that the mono, that mono tree isn't a design to conceal the antennas as the applicant has indicated that they require a seventy-foot tall tower to achieve their desired coverage. Each alternative design, such as a ski launch church, comes with trade-offs. The applicant can provide details why they chose the tree instead of other options. Trees planted around the site will help reduce the intrusiveness of the tower. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution that holding the planning commission decision to conditionally approve the conditional use permit, P U two zero 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 one, and finding the project is exempt from CECLAS pushing to section fifteen three oh three allowing the wireless communication facility at sixteen and seven San Miguel Avenue in the residential loading zone. This concludes staff's presentation. That's available for questions.
Thank you so very much. Before we get to any questions, I'll call on the appellate, Jason Sundberg. And the appellant will have fifteen minutes to make a presentation. So if I can start, I have a minute for fifteen minutes. And if you have a vote. Collier.
Good afternoon. Members of the city council. I am the fellow. And I'm a resident, a long-term, current resident who cares of our community. I'm not opposed to technology at all. I want there to be good coverage and good cell signal for every resident as it's important for our being alive nowadays. But I am strongly opposed to this particular design. I don't think our city deserves to be littered with these semi, semi-rap, these fake trees that don't really manage the environment. I don't think anyone in school, no matter the branch density or the height. This design has a significant visual impact, environmental impacts that have not been addressed, and increases the negative perception of our community. The cost to the community, geolat, the neighborhood, have not been assessed. And the environmental review is completely lacking, including alternatives. Like no alternatives would be lending to the community. It's also proposed by an entity that does not have our interest at heart. Lemon Grove should assert discretion as allowed by law. The visual impact, this tower, as you've seen in the presentation, is seventy feet tall, much taller than any existing building in the city, and forty feet in prep, which is definitely a considerable bulk and scale for a residential neighborhood. I do believe that CECLAS should, should be reviewed. There is a fair argument because of bulk and scale, foot trickery, as well as a few other figures. This thing would be able to be seen central, San Miguel, San Miguel Elementary, seed row, lemon wood, potentially further including college roads across the freeway. It does not blend with the existing neighborhood because there are no existing utility holes and discs type in this area. The trees are really in poor lack of mitigation for the visual impact because all of them are slow to grow. Even if they're thirty-six inch boxes, they may be fifteen feet to start and grow if we're lucky at two feet a year, which might mean that they, they'll provide cover when the project reaches the end of its lifespan. There's certainly water quality potential risk here. This is immediately adjacent to a storm drain. And as we've seen in the past winter, storm drains still. I think that this project really should have a jurisdictional assessment as far as the waterways because this storm drain connects to the south branch of Toyota Street, which is a jurisdictional waterway. The biology that has not been addressed. During a California natural database search, within a mile, there are twenty-four species that are on the Endangered Species Act, the California Endangered Species Act, or are considered species of concern, special concern. No surveys were conducted, even though the accessory structure is within, is not within the parking lot, it is in natural soil. There's no avoidance or mitigation measures for the sake of these species. And maybe any of these species would be considered enough for a CECLAS review. The migratory bird treaty act was not addressed in any of the documents, and there's no mitigation for nesting. This project is detrimental to the community as it is proposed. The applicant is not a resident or an interested party in our community. It will increase the, it will decrease the desirability of our neighborhood to have these kind of structures littered above. The adjacent properties could see a reduction in value of up to twenty percent. And looking at Zillow and the immediately adjacent properties, and then reducing that, that production for the properties around it, that the thirty properties there may see a net reduction in value of three point eight billion dollars, which property values equate to property taxes that the city receives. And we don't really want to reduce our property taxes. Does the value of the tower improve the property value? It doesn't because it's at a property, it's a property tax, it's at its location. So there will be no benefit for this tower to be placed if our taxes are listed. This also will reduce the future, will impact the future of Lemon Grove, including the real estate comparables by reducing the value. There's no plan for compensation of the property owners in the vicinity. Also, this creates a loss of pride and it's also a matter of equity. You would never see a structure like this going in La Jolla or any, any other more wealthy neighborhood. There is a lack of a general plan of what is going to happen to this tower throughout its lifespan. There's no, there are some requirements imposed by planning and planning missions such as landscaping, the number of branches, the reduction of graffiti. But how are these going to be enforced? Is there a strike system where the permit can be revoked when enough strikes have been, have been met? How is the city proposed to enforce these? Can there be a shorter lease allowed? And also, what about the very end of this life, of the lifecycle of this tower? I think that the cost of removal should be paid in upfront and placed in escrow. This could be a, a condition that the city places for the planning commission. And then there's the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six. And this is the thing that is being argued that we have no discretion. We absolutely have discretion for a, a reasoned approach as long as telecommunications facilities are not subjected to anti-PRAN. And the applicant must apply the least intrusive option, which no alternatives have been, have been proposed. There's a number of cases law that supports municipalities' rights in terms of the federal communications act, including in San Diego County versus Spring. And they, they want a case on aesthetic grounds, height, placement, setbacks, visibility, term of leases, and the requirement that the assertions that this is a required facility be reviewed by independent engineer. And they can require alternatives analysis, which I believe we should look strongly at alternatives. This facility also is completely inconsistent with the general plan. The general plan in regards to wireless communication facilities reads, "To avoid community impacts, the city will promote co-locating new cellular and wireless facilities with existing utility infrastructure. Locating facilities in non-residential areas, facility designs that blend with the surrounding area." This pro, this proposal is designed, does none of those. The complete lack of alternatives is a serious issue for this proposal. The telecom companies do not have our community at heart. They work on beholden to improve their first request. The applicant proposed the easiest solution for themselves, not the least intrusive. Like previous wireless facility on, on this property, this facility could be attached to the roof. We have other such facilities in town, including the road executive building on Broadway, which has antenna directly connected. For the White House, that is perched with the council previously approved, has antennas attached to the building. They could add a ski pole with equipment inside of it. We have photos of these for the council as well. I think that we need to be thinking about the future of Lemon Grove and not projects that are going to benefit few and harm most. We don't, we don't want an entity collecting benefit while others have to suffer the detriment. This project requires greater scrutiny, including a CECLAS analysis, biological surveys, aquatic resource surveys. If it were to be improved, strict conditions should be imposed, including an upfront, upfront cost for the removal of this project and a strict free-strikes policy in terms of violating the conditions that. and a strict free-strikes policy in terms of violating the conditions that are set forth. And we should demand an alternative analysis that is reviewed by an independent entity, including the sites, the design, the height, and the aesthetics. We should stand up for the residents and not companies that don't have interest in our town. There are several court decisions in the surrounding entities, including California, that would support our discretion in this matter. I urge the council to deny continuing the conditional use permit and request that the applicant provide alternatives that will better serve our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Before we move on, if you could just hang around for a moment, I want to check to see if there are any questions that we can raise. And so I can do two rounds of questions, and we'll have two questions next. And I'll start with Councilmember Leary. Do you have any questions for your fellow?
Jason, first of all, I want to say thank you for your commitment to stand for something that you believe is strong for you. Thank you for being here. I appreciate that you are part of this process today. It gives all of us as city leadership an opportunity to have open discussions about stuff. It's very, very important to all of us, for the community, so thank you. You live very close to where this is being constructed. Can you please speak to... You live very close to where this giant cellphone tower will be emitting signals and radiating stuff. You live very close to it. Can you speak to the activity? Think, your account of the activity that goes on at this church? Are dogs there? Are there children there? Are there goats there? Are people showing up every day? Do people never come to this building? It's your town, what's going on? Who's there?
Of course, thank you. Thank you for the question. So just to kind of give you a background of the area, this is, it is a large parking lot, but it is free-paged by the community. People walk their dogs here quite often. The site has regular services on Sundays. The, there's also hosted a daycare facility at the site. In fact, the tower is approximately a hundred feet from the playground with the daycare. There's other uses. There's a number of people that use it. I would say, oh, there's also like a food distribution at the site. I guess some other concerns that I have generally is that I worry that this tower might proprove future uses of the site that might be higher in vetters, such as maybe some housing elements or some other kind of like community outreach that we're trying to really accomplish. And I'm also worried about the impression that we give the community of these, like, such a rare sex kind of thing in the middle of the neighborhood. Especially at the size that you're approaching. I don't know if that answers your question, but I'm happy to clarify.
Yeah, no, how often would you say that there'd be a branch in a daycare?
Oh, yeah, every, every day, VKs. Probably from seven to six.
Seven, eight AM to six PM?
Yeah.
Monday to Friday? Are there children there?
There's children there, and I also hope that the daycare parents were openly advertised that this was going to be placed. There is no occupation by the, by the street, but it's not on the side where most of the parents are. And it's also like folded over, so it can't really be visible. It's kind of like that or over the...
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you. That's it for me. All right, thank you so very much. Councilmember Destin?
I've got a couple of questions. One is, is there anything to share in here that wasn't shared with the planning commission? And do you think that there's a reason why they wouldn't rely on our planning commission? Because we appoint the planning commission specifically to examine questions like this. I'm not, I'm not understanding why we would, you know, why we would appoint them to a planning commission and then question everything that they do. Is there some particular reason why we wouldn't rely on our planning commission to make a determination in this case?
Oh, sure. So for one, the process of this game through is very, very short notice. So in order, in order to find out that the planning commission was going to happen, there's less than ten, there's about ten days' notice, and the letter itself doesn't, doesn't, the planning package will not appear until three days prior to the planning commission. So that leaves little time for residents to be able to prepare a response for projects like this. If there were more, like sooner, community involvement, it may be easier to... With more, so yes, this does have a more thorough, robust reply to the applicant. I would also say that the planning commission was advised that they had no discretion in this matter. They were said, oh, you have, this is a ministerial matter. All you can do is approve it, and you don't have any other way in order to not approve it or request alternatives from the applicant. And that, that's where I really have an issue. I feel like there needs to be an alternatives analysis done to look at things that won't impact the community so negatively as this, as this big tower. I'm happy to clarify if you have further questions.
Yeah, well, my other question might be more general. I, I'm not really getting how this tower would affect the local species anymore. Like, if I put an APU in my backyard, it'd probably be larger and have more impact. Eighty. What is it about the towers that is troublesome? I, I've seen a lot of these around town in, in, I mean, adjacent to a church parking lot, seven feet foot high structure. I mean, it's not something that I put in my backyard just for fun, but I'm, maybe you could speak a little bit to why would this have an impact on endangered species and, and why would it impact the neighborhood negatively?
So primarily with the species. It's not necessarily the location of the tower itself as much as it is the accessory structure. This property abuts to a canyon that has a lot of native species existing in it. And there's potential for most of the ones that were listed. They've at least been observed within, within a mile, but they haven't been surveyed for. I know of some that have been observed closer than a mile in the area. And really, it is a block structure which is adjacent to some water feature that might support sensitive species. The tower, also, there's, there's issues with like bird migration that surround towers. I don't have any of the documents here that include, I have a short time here. I wanted also to know that I didn't find out that I had fifteen minutes to present in this little yesterday afternoon. I only found out that I thought I had three minutes as a public speaker. So I had a short time, and I really did want to provide a powerful, but I was a bit rushed. Sorry.
So I, I know that you're here to answer questions, but I kind of need some clarification from staff, if that's okay while we're here. Because you mentioned a ministerial matter. And I believe it's important that we all understand what a ministerial matter is. So if someone could explain that, so that we did a clear, and explain it at a very basic level, so that we all did a clear understanding of what that means, all of us.
I can address that to a certain extent. I mean, I can define ministerial, but in this case, it is a CUP. And so the conditional use permit has to meet findings required under the code. And those findings are included in, in the staff report, and they were also on the slide up here. So that, that does require a review by the planning commission and a detailed analysis of whether they can make the findings that are necessary under the code. If it were ministerial in nature, staff would typically be the one who makes that decision. I'm not sure how, I, I was not at the planning commission meeting, and I have not removed the planning commission meeting for this very purpose. But that's, that's the purpose of having the governing body determine it. If it weren't ministerial, the staff would make that decision. Maybe they were talking about a certain piece of, of the analysis? I'm not sure.
I can have a little bit of a conversation. So during the meeting, there were some concerns brought up regarding health effects as being a part of the decision, which we cannot take into consideration, planning commission cannot take into consideration when deciding on a wireless tower. So the city attorney clarified at the meeting that, or that in a lot of ways, that this project would be treated as a ministerial decision that as long as certain boxes were checked, we couldn't add conditions for which, such as the health. However, there was also probably provided, to my recollection, that aesthetics was the item that would need a discretion management.
That, that helps. I can add to that then. So the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six prohibits local governments from considering the health effects of radio frequency emissions. So there have been SEQA environmental concerns raised. SEQA does provide for an exemption for these types of telecommunications facilities, so... But with regard to the health effects on humans of radio frequency, you cannot consider the health effects because that's governed by the FCC. And the provider or the entity that operates the tower is required to abide by those FCC regulations in order to get the permitting it needs in order to provide the services that it provides. And the servicer can provide more information on that, I suppose. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And then for the appellant, I know that, oh, maybe perhaps a lot of, some, some of your questions we called around, maybe the look and feel, whether or not it, it fits the character of the neighborhood. And so, and, and I appreciate you providing the examples of what we've done. When this went to the planning commission, was there discussion of alternative designs that fall, fall outside of the basic tree, or the tree that was best and widely included in the project?
There really was no discussion of alternatives because the planning commission was generally instructed by the, to the attorney that presied, that they basically had to approve it as it is because the Telecommunications Act handcuffed their ability to have discretion. And that's, that's a big part of what I'm arguing, is that if you look at some of the other written comments, there's a significant amount of case law of local municipalities exerting requirements on telecommunications systems, as long as they don't provide an effective ban, meaning like you can't drag your feet too long, or you can't just say that they can't be here. And I'm not arguing that at all. I'm just saying we need something that definitely blends our character of the neighborhood better. And I think that the applicant should provide alternatives that are more suitable.
Thank you for restating the reason why you submitted the appeal. Those are my two questions. I'll do the second round of questions here.
Can I finish responding to this here with Councilmember Yassil? He asked also about the potential harms. Some of the harms, and I'm not arguing with the health because I totally understand the Telecommunications Act. The harms are more financial and limitations on the property because I found a number of, I think one of the attachments that I included was that appraisals will have to consider the visibility of these telecommunications systems on adjacent properties. And the more visible they are, the more they suppress your property value for resale or say for getting home equity credit. Or another harm is that they could also include the use of putting more residential in the areas that are close to the tower. Because the tower, it says that there need to be setbacks from residential development. So like the back of that lot, then, or the adjacent lots, may not be able to build any use because the tower is there, and that's a significant harm to the immediate residents and the neighborhood. Hope that answers the question more thoroughly?
Thank you. And so a little second round of questions, starting with Councilmember Leary. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Jason, and like I said, I appreciate you so much for today. This is an opportunity to discuss them. This is great. This is exactly what this community needs. We need to talk about how our city is being ran, how decisions are being made. And this is a hundred percent necessary for progress for us coming together as a community and talking things through so we can move forward in the best way possible. There's something that you said that struck out to me, and I want to narrow it on it. For anyone in this room who's not aware, who's listening to this audio after the fact, or who is watching to this livestream on Facebook, I want to let you all know that prior to me running for city council in twenty twenty, I was a Lemon Grove City Planning Commissioner. It was, it was a learning experience. It was where I started to see how the cities ran, started to know who the different players are in the city, how decisions are made, and yeah. I found a lot of important things, right? That was my first step into seeing how this city is ran. As a planning commissioner, something that struck me was that I was appointed. So all the planning commissioners are appointed by elected officials. They both are in the interview process, and the council members choose the planning commissioners. They appoint you, not something that the general public votes on. It's something that the by-elected decide. The assumption is that we are appointed because we are adults who have free will. We have agency, and we have brains of our own that are able to make educated decisions. We are presented with information, opposing views, and then we confirm conclusions. And yeah. What I found out as a planning commissioner was that I was actually being encouraged as a planning commissioner to not really use, come to my own conclusions. I was being encouraged to vote how city staff wanted to vote.
Councilmember Leary, are you making your final statement? Because we actually have, we have helped the applicant who will come up and do a presentation. And we will have the applicant need to do two rounds of questions with the applicant. And we will proceed with, after those questions comes as well. So if you have two questions for the appellant right now, please ask those two questions so that we can move forward to the applicant. And then here for the applicant, ask their questions, and then we have a thorough discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. As councilmembers, we're here to deliberate as, that's what I'm doing. I do have two questions, and I'm getting to those. And I am leading up to my questions for the benefit of the public. So like I was saying on planning commission, I noticed that I was being encouraged to not develop my own opinions, but rather push forward city staff's opinions, which I opposed because that was not what I was supposed to be doing as a planning commissioner. You said something, when I started this, I said, you said something that struck me. You said, "Planning commission was advised they have no discretion in the matter." And that is something that bothered you. Because in reality, planning commission does have discretion in the matter. They have a lot of discretion, as a matter of fact. They have a lot of discretion, as a matter of fact. And since through my lived experiences of being a planning commissioner and having experience that I was being wrongfully advised on what it was my duty to do, how I should be doing my job, I 100% know what you're talking about. And I wanted to share that experience with the public because it's to the public's benefit to know that there are people who are put in these very hard positions that are being misguided. Hey, you said that, right? That planning commission was advised, they have no discretion in the matter? That's according to, you heard that at the planning commission meeting? The planning commissioner said that? I'd like to know where you heard that.
It was the other attorney, the other attorney, that said that, she said that it was a ministerial matter, and that they didn't basically, their choice was to approve it. And they really, they didn't allow for discretion. Because basically, they said that the Federal Telecommunications Act, basically a handle of, I mean, they didn't say it in these words, of course. They said that that was basically how they need to work to approve it. And that municipalities had little, little. And it is a conditional use permit, so I think that they could have very well imposed many, many more conditions than were imposed already. And I have suggested a number of those conditions, such as like the ability to revoke the permit, to force a upfront payment for the disassembly and disposal of the tower in the event that the permit conditions are not met. Also that they need to provide other alternatives to place it on the building to actually look with that with a real eye and actually consider it, rather than consider the applicant's easiest option.
Thank you. I'm going to wrap up my thoughts real quick. So yeah, like I said, that struck me from what you said, and I just felt compelled to let the public know that sometimes people who are in these positions to make decisions that greatly affect the community were ill advised. And that's coming from attorneys, because that's what's happened. And I can speak to that through my lived experience as a planning commissioner. And yeah, I just, I think the public needs to know that. And obviously, we have discretion because you're here before us. You have the right to appeal planning commission decisions. And now, we act in a quasi-traditional fashion, and we have a lot of power and authority behind us. Matter of fact, we have millions and millions of taxpayer dollars behind us. So if the community wants something, and obviously we should be following the law, of course, then we can absolutely do that. If the community acts, then we're unstoppable. What can't we do to support our community? So just want to point that out.
Councilmember Yassil?
I think at this point, my questions will be per stand.
I believe that you can ask those questions now, if they're per stand. I think you can ask your questions.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'm concerned that the attorney at the planning commission meeting is not the same as the city attorney that is here. And it's hard for us to review a planning commission decision when we don't know, we're getting the same guidance. There have been cases in the history of Lemon Grove where the planning commission didn't approve projects that we felt that our city attorney almost, we had to approve. That's a housing element at the elephant's tail on that map. You might know about a few years ago, the planning commission said, no, it's not okay. And when it came to the city council, we were told that we didn't really have a choice. We had to go ahead and approve it. And it seems like a decent mlement, and I don't feel too bad about that. But I want to make sure that we're coherent and apples to apples. And the other thing is in regard to the, in regard to the concern about species or environmental impacts, I'm not sure if the alternatives are any different. I mean, it seems like that would be an argument for doing nothing with the space and leaving the space open, not an argument for doing something alternative with the space, or leaving the space available for reuse or something else. So I'm a little confused on that. I think it's possible that staff might be able to steer us a little bit on, you know, as to would there be value in sending this back to the planning commission to make sure that they're asking the same questions that we would have been asking, and that they have the same concept of their purview that we have of their purview? And if the planning commission is able to consider alternatives, if there's anything the planning commission would logically wish that they had done, I'd want to give them a chance to do it. So those are the questions that have probably, yeah. Thank you.
I can speak to a couple of those items and with a little bit of an explanation. The reason you have two different attorneys representing the planning commission versus the city council, they don't have a conflict interest. Or I represented both the planning commission and the city council. So if there's ever a time where I go to a planning commission meeting and there's an appeal, and we're not sitting in this seat for that appeal. So that's why we have two different attorneys. I wasn't at the planning commission meeting, and I have not reviewed the planning commission meeting. But I can say that there is a heavy hand of the federal government involved in telecommunications. The Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 that we've been talking about, FCC, and that is reflected through environmental law as well as there are specific exemptions for telecommunications facilities. And I believe that stems from a policy of the federal government that they want to support this type of infrastructure to increase telecommunications. The other issue, and I'm sure that Michael Fellows can expand on this, is that telecommunications companies choose to build these towers or small cell sites or co-locations based upon their need of reaching certain geographic areas. So the reason it is 70 feet tall, and I'm going to have Michael follow up on this, but the reason that I understand it 70 feet tall is because that's what they need in order to achieve the frequency that they need. And if there are no alternative options, like making it shorter, and they want to be able to achieve their radio frequency that they need, then there is no alternative that's going to meet their needs. And in that case, the federal government has dictated that you have to allow them to make it 70 feet. The discretion that you do have is over the aesthetics, is over how does it look? How does it fit in? Are there, you can consider alternatives. If there are alternatives that meet the same need, and meet the same need of the telecommunications company that's building the project. So yes, you can consider alternatives, if there are any, and aesthetics of the specific tower. In Lemon Grove, we don't have a code section on telecommunications facilities. And that may be something to consider cleaning up in the future, but for now, we do not have a code section that specifically addresses the aesthetics of these types of. And Michael, do you want to expand on some of the aesthetics?
I do not believe there is any confusion on the part of the planning commission of whether they could regulate the aesthetics of the tower. In this staff report, we did, to planning commission, we had mentioned that the communication facility would likely impact this to develop as the tower would be visible from nearby residential properties. So we didn't, it was, both of the planning commission, this would be visible from other properties. However, meaning that the tower would be designed to look, designed and conditioned to look like a tree, thus similar characteristics would be planted nearby the towers in my opinion, to be considered useful in the west. And so where the areas where there was some limitation on what the planning commission previously mentioned later in this part of the report, where it says, it is also, it is important to emphasize that compliant with the Telecommunications Act of 1996, most any local government may regulate replacement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects and radio frequencies emissions if the tower is compliant with the rest of the regulations. So I think that's where the kind of ministerial decision came into play. During the planning commission meeting, I showed three examples in my PowerPoint presentation of four examples of trees in the city that we have concerns about, and explained that we were adding additional conditions of approval to ensure that this tree looks better than those trees, which included having the natural canopy, having trees brought on it, which included density of branching, which also included branches on the tree from a certain distance beyond the tower. So some of the really unattractive trees, like only referred to as probably grounds Christmas tree, you know, we tried to put conditions to ensure that we didn't end up with that type of tree. And what the commission was doing, and what staff has recommended, was exercising discretion when it came to aesthetics, when those were good.
Could I answer the question about the species? The primary issue with the species isn't the tower, it's really the accessory structure that isn't on the parking lot, it's not actually in the parking lot, it's adjacent to a storm grain on a natural slope. That's the one that will have the most effects, and that certainly would be considered to be relocated into the parking lot and not have an effect on the species. Also, I guess in terms of alternatives, I don't feel like alternatives were really explored. Like, yes, maybe the tower does need to be 70 feet, but if it were to be attached to the building, or an addendum to the building, like the previous cell site on this, that this location was, then those wouldn't be an aesthetic issue. Because it would look like part of the church, it would belong, be part of church architecture, not be this 70-foot tree, big tree in the little parking lot that cannot be hidden by trees in our region. Like, our trees don't grow to 70 feet. And even if they were to, the trees would be planted, it would be 15 feet, it would take 30 years to grow. If you review the cases that were put in some of the written comments, the county of San Diego had a court case with a string. And the court found that the state, the county's regulations of cell towers on aesthetic grounds did not bar string from providing telecommunications services. And thus, the ordinance did not violate the federal communications laws. So the issue is, it's not, we can regulate them on aesthetic grounds, it's just we can't totally deny them a permit. And I don't want to deny them from setting up a facility, I just want one that is going to blend with the neighborhood. And I think it's entirely reasonable to ask for alternatives that are even closer to the building, attached to the building, don't include the accessory structure and the natural slope. Also, the city palace of Green Bay's had a court case with string too, that allowed them to regulate these towers because the city has the authority to consider aesthetics when denying construction permits in general. And that also applies to cell sites, as long as they also did not become a de facto ban, as I mentioned.
Thank you. I want to say here that I actually served secure from the planning commission. And if there is pushback regarding a cell tower being installed in the community, and if the appointed folks who are serving, or even elected officials, decide to push back on these cell towers, then the elected officials and the appointed officials are breaking the law. And so, as mentioned here, and I want to restate this, there's only certain things that you can do, and it revolves around sets, and that's why I asked that question earlier on, you know, what is the real ask here? Because when I look at the PowerPoint presentation, it mentions a conflict with the general plan, it mentions an environmental review, and it mentions the Telecommunications Act of 1996, and I just need clarification regarding the aesthetics. These thoughts about what could be in these photos, were these provided when this agenda item went to the planning?
There was not sufficient time to prepare this level of presentation three days before the, when the staff packet came out to when the planning commission was. The packet came on Thursday afternoon, planning commission was on Monday. There was much, much less time for an ordinary citizen in order to respond to this. This is part of a general process issue that I have, that I feel like public needs much longer notification, things like this are prepared. We're not professionals in this. We're just ordinary citizens looking out for our well-being and the well-being of our neighborhoods. And we, that all of this was not aired because there was not sufficient time. There's been a month since then, and now there has been more time to review what information is available to the general public. We can't just hire professionals and lawyers. We have to kind of represent ourselves in these matters, and there were a lot of time to do this.
Thank you so very much. I would like clarification from staff regarding the notice requirements for projects like this, because I believe by law, government agencies are required to provide sufficient notice to the community about projects just like this. And to follow up, you know, I'd also like to know if there is real value in sending this back to the planning commission, because what you're bringing to us today was not brought forward to the planning commission. And this discussion should have taken place in the planning commission and not here. That's where the real change happens. So, you know, I just want clarification on those two things. Thank you.
First, Mayor, by law, you have a 10-day notice in your permit. That is the bargain state of California. Any type of condition you can use permits, planning commission, public carry, 10-day requirement by law. We not only send a 500 radio notice to all residents of the affected property, we also post in the newspaper, at least county Californian, that has to approve 10 days before. Now, the city council would like to change that, we certainly can create a higher threshold, but that's a discussion for another time, not current day. The question of whether this should be sent back to the planning commission, that is a decision that the city council needs to make, not staff.
Thank you so very much. And so we completed our two rounds of questioning. I'm going to go ahead and move forward and have, excuse me, and have the applicant come up, Harold Thomas Jr., with MD7 Incorporated. And the applicant will have 15 minutes to make his presentation.
I'd like to thank the council very much. Here it is.
Video, I am Charles Thomas, part on behalf of MD7, the agency. Opportunity to speak freely tonight. I'd also like to thank the members of the audience as well as the public. I also want to take the time to thank Mr. Michael Fellows, where your staff, the board, the commission, the public. I'm here to not only address the points I raised by the advocate, but also to share the presentation I had shared with the commissioners, the planning commission area. So please, on the next slide. So I wanted to start off with this, I had shared with the commissioners that the installation of this wireless facility here was only introducing a first step, it's also a public segment. Now, what first step, what first step is, that it's dedicated network that's specialized for emergency service personnel, firefighters, police department, anybody that for our purchase, emergency service personnel, firefighters, police department, anybody that is working within the public service will be able to benefit, and this is something that's going to be equipped up to our tower in an area that's residential, as far aside as you mentioned, this is going to be beneficial, not only to the public servants, but also to the neighbors and the residents system. Because we know that in the event of an emergency, one of the last things that we want to worry about is estimated time of arrival for our public service. I wanted to also add that in California, 80% of 91 calls are made from our system. We know that wireless devices, cell phones, possibly always rapidly need to be used, so this is something that we noted and found to be very important. And just wanted to know also, so you know, first net is not only going to be here, but it's been actually adopted by San Diego Police Department, San Diego County Sheriff's Department, as well as the San Diego County Human Health Service, as you're saying. This is a, that's definitely adopted, and this is something that we're going to be bringing to the panel. So, but also want to provide, which I shared with the commissioners, our photo simulation of our design. Our points about design allows us to find and evaluate these, not only his notes, but also some of the documents that he shared, and others, different types of cell towers are running growth, and as well as how poorly designed. What I'm going to show you on the next slide is just what we have, what we're proposing, and how this is going to be different from the ones that you were saying. So this is looking at North San Diego, right there you'll see our proposed mono broadleaf tree. Now, one of the things to note, why we chose the broadleaf, is that back on March 27 last year, when they first received our comments from the city, running growth, our design, they asked us to provide different design options. They had actually asked that we consider mono lipstick, mono palm tree, and then mono pine tree, because they knew that we were going to be proposing a mono broadleaf, but they wanted to see other aspects. Again, that's because they've seen other designs, and they wanted this to be, they needed this to be. I think even Mr. Fellow's presentation mentioned that there was a requirement of 3.5 foot, 3.5 feet for the branches. Before I go to the next slide, I want to let the commissioners know, and the members of the public, that this tower is going to be adequately branched, so much so that we are putting four branches per foot, so we're going to be having a density of about 280 branches, to make sure that it's very thick, make sure it looks as well integrated as possible. Go to the next slide, please. This is looking at the back currently from the east, this is along Seagull Place, and on the second one back, we have, the far back there are those existing trees, I was looking, it looks like those were around 58 feet wide, and then you also just have some along the street, I mean, along that. But, the next slide, what you'll see is not only our desired tree that's in the middle, but you're also going to see that those proposed trees are going to be providing screenage, screenage from the closest front, as well as working in conjunction with the trees that's in the middle. So to be able to help provide as much screenage as possible. Go to the next slide, please. This is going to be looking at a westward parking lot, this is exactly where the proposed equipment enclosures that we got. You'll see that right there, that is where we have our proposed equipment enclosure right in the middle, as well as the two proposed high oak trees, and then on the bottom, you can see those are going to be the various shrubs that we're going to plant near the equipment enclosure to help it get a better feel. Do you go back to this? Yeah, okay, so, in order, so yes, just so you can see, this is exactly what we're proposing, as what was mentioned by the county concerned as raised, we want to make sure that this is built as evenly as possible. We propose to, we shared with the city of Lemon Grove that we would be installing this. They also requested that we provide another tree in the parking lot as well, so we're making sure to add as much training as possible, just to make sure that this doesn't stick out as nice as well. This is just, it'll be looking to the northwest, in the slide, in the staff presentation provided by Mr. Fellow, she noted that there were five trees, and even the next slide, this is going to be the location of the trees. So what we're doing is we're doing our best to add trees to the northwest of the parking lot, as well as what you saw across from Seagull Lane, so that we can provide as much screenage as well as the existing one that's up here on east of the park. Although, because of the quality, it is a little difficult to see the colors, I'm not sure if staff will have the actual map themselves, but what happens is, is the general area is going to be highlighted, you know, our, this is our coverage map, our geographic surveying map, what you'll see is that it's identified by four colors, it's going to have green, yellow, red, and then white. The green is just where you're going to have reliable coverage both indoor and outdoor, yellow is where you can have reliable coverage indoor, not so much outdoor, red is where you have more reliable coverage outdoor and some indoor, and then white is just unreliable all around. So apparently, where our site senses in the yellow, so you can grab some reliable coverage indoor, but with, on the next slide, our goal is to be able to turn it completely green, that's exactly what you'll see on the presentation, because what we're trying to do is bridge the gap, be able to provide adequate coverage that the community deserves and what it needs. And you'll see that in the next slide, and then the following, the following slide is, this is what it uses alone. Now, one of the points raised by the county was just looking at ultimate designs, again, that was something that on 3/27 last year, city had asked us to look at it, they evaluated it, they came to a conclusion that mono broadleaf would be adequate, but to provide some nice maintenance to it. Also, I want to note that they asked about other possible locations. Well, there is one that's located half a mile on billboard near the 94, it's near Pro Massage, after Bee's Barbershop, and across the street from Burger King, it's also located 0.7 miles away, so that's outside of our target area of the area that we're seeking to be able to provide coverage to the San Diego area. Additionally, it's at a lower elevation, about 26 feet of difference, so even if we were to locate here, one, because on the bottom of the billboard, it's not going to be able to provide the coverage that we need in that area, but additionally, it's also at a lower elevation. There's also another one that is located near 2600 Hardy Drive, it's about 1.3 miles away, but that's, if you see the distance is greater, so that's even further away. So we did make sure to take a look at different locations before deciding this one, and after the conclusion, this site is where it was best able to serve, additionally, one of the things that was also concerned was about, I don't know if you can hear, one of the reasons I remember they probably had raised was about placing it on the roof. One of the benefits that we believe in having it where it is, is one, it's further away from the property spaces, so much so that it's about 190 feet from the residential block. If we were to place it on top of that church we're looking at, reducing that to about 90 feet, which is right there. Additionally, if we were to move it up to the rooftop, it's not going to be able to provide that coverage. One of the things that was noted was aesthetics. Being at a lower elevation, I believe that the roof is on around 30 or 35, if we were to extend that, that is not going to look well integrated at all, it's honestly going to look very ugly. So we looked at, we evaluated it from that aspect. Again, we also evaluated how close this is to residential, looking at 190 feet around. And then, 190, 190 feet, and additionally, I just make here, we're not taking away the parking spaces. If we were to place a, each of the church being closer to the east little alley between separating it from the residential, we're looking at not only a closer distance to residential block base, but also the potential to take away parking spaces. Where this is located at is inside of an existing lantern, and then additionally, the enclosure is in Hillside, so we're not taking away any of the usable space that the church already, that the church already has. And then I know that one of the concerns was just about how the safety, as you probably understand, the rules for sequel, but I do want to let commissioners know, the councilman members know, that city's Lemon Grove had requested that we engage in best management practices, and it's something that we have to include, some of those being that the runoff areas outside of the project area will be diverted to where the enclosure is, we're also going to be having some settlement control there as well. One of the other, one of the other things just to note is that, again, with this being a side of batteries, it's not going to be making any noises, we had a third part of a research study, they ran a report, concluded that there would be no noises, significant noises, and then we also made sure that per required by the city to submit a RF permission report, make sure that it was safe, based off of the studies found, it was also being that this was safe. I think that is my, on the presentation, I'm going to go.
Thank you so very much, Mayor, and due to related questions, each person has two questions, and I'm sorry, we're going to go over there. Thank you, ma'am mayor. Mr. I apologize, I don't remember my name, right?
It was Harold Thomas.
Harold Thomas, okay. Thank you, Harold, for your presentation, thank you for being here to discuss this and answer our questions. Let's see. Uh, no. Um, it's fantastic, it's okay. Um, so let's start with first one. So this is a broadband network through AT&amp;T. How many cell phone towers are there in our city?
Oh, I believe in the same, but I don't know, yeah, on the, we, in the half hour, yes, there's a tour. Okay. Based upon various systems, around 0.7 miles to 0.8.
Okay, I'm just going to say that, I, is that, don't necessarily recall there being any existing AT&amp;T cell phone towers in the city within the city of the neighborhood?
No, 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 I was saying the total count, I don't recall how many is in total, altogether for the neighborhood, but I do have a total of at least three and a half miles of AT&amp;T.
Yeah, but my question, okay, maybe there's a little bit of confusion, my question is how many AT&amp;T towers are inside of, within?
Within the city limits, I think that there's a total of, I want to say that it's a little over 10, currently on the coverage maps, what you'll see is that there are dots, those are, at least within this mile radius, a total of, total number of AT&amp;T facilities. So you'll find out on the maps, you'll notice that there are several dots or, several symbols there that will just indicate existing AT&amp;T facilities.
Okay. We're limited to, yeah, every single question that I ask you, counted by the mayor, is like a size of a clarifying question, counted against, number of questions, thirty? I feel like I need to ask a couple more questions just to gain thirty that I'm scared to ask, because then I'll.
For clarification, she's actually already asked a question, I'm going to do a second round, so she'll have an opportunity to ask more questions.
My apologies.
Yeah, so what I'll do is, I'll go ahead and segue to councilmember Gastel, they'll have two questions, I'll have two questions. There is no holding time against anybody, it's just a standard operating procedure that we've got in place. Okay, I'll go ahead and rely on the councilmember Gastel.
I want to make sure that I understand what you're suggesting.
We're in the process of asking questions, we are not providing comments, and so, again, I will rely on councilmember Gastel, thank you.
I'm not being interrupting, I'm confused about what you're asking my questions, and I have the right to ask them, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, we're all here seeing, I think, a point of each thing, but we can all be heard. I'm not sure why you feel that you're cutting me off without any guarantee, so the management of the public is, like I said, not helpful. Would you plead the values of the people? And wrap up my thoughts.
From the non-councilmember Gastel, I'll do a second round of questions, thank you.
Okay, I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about what would we miss, what would we be missing as a community if we didn't do this tower or some equivalent tower, I mean, let's just say hypothetically that we did, I'm kind of intrigued by the location near Burger King, because I think that's probably the one place in Lemon Grove where no one thinks that we could make it look worse. And, and that's intriguing to me. Because if we built the tower there instead of, instead of in the proposed location, what would we be missing, what would the community miss out on? I think that's my question.
Yeah, so, being over there, it's about a half mile from the, I'm sorry, no, it's about 0.7 miles from the target area, so one of the biggest things is that our parking area is not over there, so by placing it over there, we're not like in the area that we're sitting. So that's one of the reasons why we're there. So, yes.
I'm understanding that the, that the area near the freeway called it's grown, Burger King is already served, so it wouldn't, okay, so it wouldn't really serve a purpose to have put a, okay, what is the community missing, and this is, I believe, the northwest corner of Lemon Grove where two councilmembers live, what is that community missing if this tower isn't built? Tell me a little bit about what kind of loss we could experience.
Well, at least regarding to the loss, it would just be that that area will remain at the coverage that it's had, and additionally, just that, by, it would just be remaining at the coverage that it's had, and our goal is to be able to bring the first net network into that area because it's large, it's residential, so have also be an additional loss that would be on, if we didn't receive a decision.
Thank you so very much, and if I could try now, I think in the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned something like, you mentioned first net, and the fact that, you know, this would help for emergency response, so it would help to improve emergency response within the community. So it would help to improve emergency response within the community. And I think that's the added value. Um, for me, and my question, uh, there was a statement about environmental mitigation. My question is, is that solely related to construction? Because I know that there's, um, the project, because I know that there's a climate there. But once a facility is built, what kind of environmental mitigations will be put into place to make sure, um, that that area's environmentally sustainable?
I know that the best management practices, which is what we, you know, did on, um, drawing and then those will also be, um, carried over into our building department and the building review. Those are what we're proposing. So I, what would happen is that planning, construction, that's what they would have to design to make sure that we are following what we said we were going to do, we were already approved. So they'll just have to make sure they construct that. And I believe that even before they finalize it, that the city would have to go out there and make sure that everything is. And we said we were gonna do that.
Uh, thank you so very much. Uh, before I get to the second round of questions, I just want to let everyone know here that if I can, uh, if you'd like to speak on this agenda item, you can get a speaker slip and fill that out. And I'll bring it up to where city put it. Um, because, um, just want to provide an opportunity for the public to chime in regarding this project while we're here. And so I will move on to councilmember Leary to ask some questions. Thank you.
Harold, I want to say I appreciate your candid responses and your genuine desire, genuine, genuine desire to ensure that all of us as decision makers understand. Really appreciate that. If I'm understanding what you said earlier correctly, it seems that, just on what you said, there are about ten to eleven existing cell phone towers in or right around Lemon Grove. Lemon Grove is a city that's three miles across, very tiny city. You know, that's a very small city. And in this very tiny little city, there's already ten to eleven existing cell phone towers. If I'm understanding what you said. Perfect. Thank you. Question is. Pardon me? I only have one more question. Oh, I have two questions because I have not yet asked a question. Okay. All right. So. We've already established there are already existing. Well, I can say as a person who has literally walked this entire three miles of our city and knocked on hundreds of doors, is that, and talked to hundreds of people, I have yet to encounter, by constituents, people of the city saying that they have an issue with their cell phone service. That's not something that I hear anybody saying ever. People also don't say that they have an issue when they pick up their cell phone. Yet if they were to punch in the numbers nine one one, if they would have an issue reaching, like if the cell phone service is so bad that they can't reach nine one one in an emergency? I have yet to hear that yet. Actually, I want to say in my entire life, I'm thirteen, fourteen, and I'm like, you're practically all the time. So, as I've said, uh, I'm getting represented, right? We, we all have different motives, right? We all have different agendas. We all have different prerogatives. And I appreciate yours a hundred percent. Sometimes our prerogatives, uh, sometimes they differ. And sometimes there, we can meet and they, sometimes there's a, a comment, uh, somebody they could represent. Because, you know, I make money and you guys want to know the cell phone number. That's just kind of the short story, right? That's okay. This is America. God bless it. That's fine. Long for it. So my prerogative is to protect the community, right? So I have some questions. I speak for the community as well. Um, like I said, if there are anybody complaining about their cell phone service, not really ever. FirstNet, it's sensitive to high speed wireless broadband network. That's intended for public safety, for first responders, like firefighters. Like, no, unfortunately, like I've already said, never heard anybody in the city saying that they have an issue with dialing nine one one and getting a hold of our firefighters or our sheriffs. Tell me a little bit more about, so what is this all? Is this going to be a cell phone tower that is just allowing for like dispatch calls to go through it? AT&amp;T calls or what's it?
Well, just to clarify, because I know that you made some comments about difficulty. And I also just don't make any statements about coverage. I think it's kind of important to know is that I did notify, did know that those are at least AT&amp;T. There's other areas that I can, so, so, you know, there's Verizon, there's, um, Noble, uh, there's, there's Ditch. So I think that, where I think there might be a little bit of difficulty is that you have, you have, there's also some nuances, okay? What is this area? Is this area Verizon? I want, I want also make sure to know that I did not say that there's known that he's not able to, uh, phone call. That anyone's not able to do an alarming call. I would not even dare to say that that'd be very, very, it's very complex. All I'm saying is that this is something that is going to be fit. So regarding to the question, the tower is, FirstNet is just one of the additions. It's not what this whole tower is. That's just one of the additions apparently. It's one of the, the networks, uh, it's one of the softwares that we're proposing with the ring here. This is just all included within our, um, tower. So it's beneficial to AT&amp;T users, but it's also beneficial to FirstNet, which is why I'm here to add that.
Okay. Um, that said, like I said, people can already, there's calls happening already, knowledge is that, um, I know there, um, anyone's aware of my help. Uh, with first responders being able to make their calls, use their radios, whatever they got to do, people calling them, people calling like nine one or sheriffs. Do you say it'd be beneficial to first responders also?
Because it's an added, um, it's something that's new, that's added to them because this is dedicated. So what happens is that in the event of an emergency, I have a first, I have a FirstNet, there is an already dedicated broadband that they work with. So they don't have to, um, that's just for them, not just, um, AT&amp;T users. But it's for them to be able to contact. It's a dedicated, uh, broadband only first line. So all this is, is that it is a benefit, it's something that they can have at their disposal. You know, one of the things I made sure to add is that this is not just something that we're proposing here for the first time. You know, this is something that's going to San Diego Police Department, San Diego County Sheriff's Department, San Diego County Health Service agencies. So this is something that, um, is not just, something I'm presenting new for the first time that has not been established. This is something that's being adopted everywhere. So regarding your question, it's just the fact that this is something, um, beneficial. It's just something that further add on to the, to the theory. You know, we think that that's great. Anything that further help or, you know, further pass that baton down the line, we would have to. It's one of the reasons why we have, uh, FirstNet.
I think so very much. I'm gonna move on to the councilmember Gastel.
Ma'am mayor, I, could I wrap up my thoughts on, um, this? So he gave a response. I feel it's reasonable for me to be able to respond to his response. Um, is that okay with you, ma'am mayor, that I respond to?
I'm gonna move on to the councilmember Gastel. I'm, with all respect, the people's time is here in this council. And so, councilwoman Gastel, do you have two questions?
Uh, no, I, I, I don't have any more questions right now.
And I do not have any additional questions at this time. And so I want to check the, um, our, the first, we'll think of the first. And, uh, if we need to call you back up, um, I'll, I'll definitely call back, uh, because you have to call my business.
Just a thing.
And I'll call up, uh, Phil Snow and go after the minutes. Uh, if you can speak louder, thank you so much.
So I submitted, um, earlier. And so really the only points I wanted to make is that we, as, and we don't have a code or a set of party news. And I think we need to take time and create that, and create, um, ordinance that will address things like this. And we don't have to do this again. Um, Lemon Grove doesn't have to accept everything that it does. We can make, you know, aesthetic changes. I wouldn't be opposed to a third, let's see, or they're, like, church, give them three more feet of coverage or whatever of course. Um, and there are other options. The city needs to explore this utility home. We're going to get a book, they put them on YouTube to, to get it. The church needs to look at other options. That back parking lot is not used. Um, and so the, the trees that he presented that the manageable camouflage is, they treat are no longer there. I spent sixteen grand taking them down. Um, and so they're not camouflaging anymore. And, uh, the last thing is that the church had an opportunity to use that back parking lot. Recent state laws that allowed them to put housing back there. And I'm sure they didn't, you know, get, uh, additional laid out, right? But attaching it to the building, making it a hundred feet tall, so people or whatever they have, just is beneficial, beneficial. And if we blend in with this surrounding area, if it's a church across, it's people, it's a bell tower, anything. It doesn't have to be a tree.
Uh, thank you so much. And, um, we only have one speaker, so I want to hear the opponent.
Yeah. By May, um, the city post office has received written public comment for this island. That public comment is now available on the city's website. And the comments have been made and placed on the table as soon as it can enter the meeting.
Thank you so very much, um, for providing that clarification. And, um, there were some comments provided, um, from the public. I want to give, um, the opponent and the applicant an opportunity to respond through those comments. And, uh, I'll give you like five minutes to vote. And so I'll ask, um, Harold Thomas to come up. And then after Harold Thomas. Harold Thomas. And then once, um, Harold Thomas is done, then I'll ask, uh, Jason Sundberg to come up. And he can sit there for five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It will just, um, I do think that, we think, thank the member that I experienced in life and your point of view. And about the fact of a hundred foot tower. But I think that that's pretty important. And, you know, we, you know that, we, we made sure to take a look before we started about how I would possibly build this tower. We noticed that on section seventeen, twenty-four, that's zero, uh, dot zero four zero, section C four eight. Um, it's a mention about how kind of tower could go up to, um, if they want to. And that's something that AT&amp;T know, noticed. And that's something that AT&amp;T knew going into, you know, the initial basis. But that's not something that we, we knew. Because we're not, just because we can do something like that, didn't mean that that's something that we needed to do. What we needed, which made sure that we did follow the rules as outlined by the code. We made sure that we followed the code, but we also made sure that we did a design that would best suit the area. So a hundred feet, again, I, I have to go back. We're looking at being closer to the residential properties to the east. That's not something that we want to do. We understand the pushback. We understand the concerns of having to be right there. At the proposed location, we're looking at about a hundred and ninety feet away from that eastern property. We're looking at about, uh, from across a hundred, hundred twenty-five feet from that property, right? To the south about five hundred fifty-seven, to the west up here at the forty. So we're looking at the area that is far away from, um, homes. Because we understand, we understand the, the rules of electromagnetic frequency. But we also make sure to take the concerns. I, I take the time to go to various, um, community planning groups around the cities. I hear that all the time. So we hear that all the time, which is why, you know, again, I appreciate the, the suggestion. But we're looking at ninety feet compared to one ninety. Uh, combined with, you know, the concerns that people have, might have themselves out right there. And again, just because we could go up to a hundred feet, we, we were very much aware of that. We didn't do that. It's not what we thought. That's not what we desired. Um, seventy feet was adequate and sufficient enough to be able to meet our coverage objectives. I just had to make sure that, uh, that I just noted that. And again, those, those treaties that we're providing, not saying that it is going to one hundred percent guarantee. Look, if nothing's there, can't find you or not in the library. The councilmembers are not going to lie to the community. But what I can say is that for our design, where it's located, added with the fact that Mr. Fellows and members of the legislative commissions asked us to place another tree outside of the parking lot. We're doing everything we can to adequately screen the area. We're doing everything we can to meet our coverage objectives, not be greedy. And choose a design, again, that last year on the twenty-seventh, city had asked us to provide alternate designs. We did that, shared it with the church afterwards, cleared across all boards. That's all in our pursuit to fulfill this, I guess, which is why I think that.
Uh, thank you so very much. And if I can have Jason Sundberg coming, come up?
Um, there's a few things that I'd probably take notice, uh, issue with. Well, as, as I mentioned, the, the trees to the east are gone. Those evil of those trees and the staff provided photo are not there anymore. And it will, will definitely stick into the sky far more. I, I do want to go back to the public notice. I have five minutes. Public notice, I, I received my mailing on Tuesday and the planning commission meeting was on probably Monday, which is, is definitely not the pending of this. That was, that was a discussion that required. Um, there's a few other things about AT&amp;T coverage. I have a neighbor that's right near me that has AT&amp;T. He wrote in written comments and he has excellent coverage in his, right where he is. And he's in view of this proposed tower. So if there's a hole, I'm not really sure where it is. This is where I think the independent analysis by an engineer would really be warranted. Um, because it would, it would actually provide somebody with the knowledge to evaluate the claims being made by the applicant. Um, I also want to note that that parking lot is never full. I don't think there's any reason to put the, um, utility building in the natural slope when it could be put in the parking lot and not cause a potential issue for sensitive species. And, uh, those, those two parking spaces that might be taken up will never be missed. Um, that parking lot has never been full. Um, I want to mention across the canyon, the San Diego Classic Pigeon.
Um, I want to mention across the canyon, the San Diego Classic Pigeon Club, um, actually was approached by this company for the cell phone tower, and they declined. They did not want it in their neighborhood, because they know that it affects their birds, and it may affect their longstanding vision that they had in our town. Um, I, I talked to some first responders about FirstNet in the adjacent city, some firefighters particularly, and they said, they didn't really want FirstNet. They, they were offered it, and they said Verizon has better coverage for their purposes. They also thought that it was probably just a way to charge their department more money for a service that really wasn't of much value to them. Um, I feel like this discussion of alternative sites has not been, um, thoroughly looked at. We talked about Burger King, we talked about, they didn't talk about the, uh, U-Haul location, they didn't talk about places that already have other cell phone tower, uh, facilities on site. That's the co-loading, co-locating that the general plan advises, um. Um, I think those commercial districts could have taller towers, because the applicant had mentioned that, uh, ta, elevation difference was something like twenty feet or something. So just build a twenty-foot taller tower or a Burger King, and you'll get, get the result that you're looking at for. Um, I really believe that the applicant is pushing for the easiest option of building this tree. Um, they don't, they don't want to go through the difficulty of structural analysis of the building, even though that would be much better for our community, and that's what us as residents are demanding, something that would be in line with existing architecture. I feel like it's a, another push to externalize cost, because we, as residents, will see a reduction in our property values and limitations put on our property. Um, even though it's not near residences now, that may preclude the construction of residences near where this tower may be. Um, and there is no breaking the law to assert the city's discretion and impose greater conditions on a conditional use permit. There's lots of case law as per, provided by the written comments that would support this. And I feel like the city should really stand up to the residents rather than trying to support, you know, a new money-making venture by a telecom company, especially when much better alternatives are available. Thank you so much for your time.
Um, thank you so much. What I'm going to do here is one more round of questions, um, from the council members. And so you can ask questions of staff, the appellant, or the applicant. And, um, two questions, I'll start with, uh, council member LeBaron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think that I need to ask any more questions, actually. Um, the rep, the AT&T answered my, like, in a very thorough picture for me, and so did the appellant. I think that everybody will understand how I go on this, when I deliberate at the very end. I'm fine, thank you.
Uh, council member Gastro?
I, I'm in a position, um, that we don't see very often, where I wish there were two more council members to provide additional perspective. Uh, where it's something of a disadvantage, having forty percent of our council disqualified. Uh, I can say that, um, I'm still undecided about what to do, but I know what I don't want to do. And what I don't want to do is the job of the planning commission. I, I don't think it's my job to say if the tower belongs in a church, or, or if it belongs in a parking lot, um, or what the design should be. I, I think the reason why, it's important that planning commission decisions could be, can be appealed, uh, to the city council, but I think the reason is, is so that the council can make sure that the thought, that the right processes were followed, and that everybody got heard that needed to be heard. Not so that we can second-guess the wisdom of the planning commission, we, we want a lot of time and energy into a big planning commission. And, and I think the five planning commissioners spend more time and have more expertise on these matters than, than, than the council members do. With the possible exception of two council members who used to serve, uh, three council members who used to serve on the planning commission, I'm not one of them. Um, so, so, um, I see two choices, and, and I'm open to some discussion about which choice is the wiser choice. Uh, one option is to tell the planning commission that we think they did a great job. And the other option is to send it back to the planning commission to give them another chance to do their job. And I don't mean if I knew what the, what, what, would the planning commission appreciate it if we send it back to the planning commission? Because I don't want to send it back to the planning commission and just have them think that we're second-guessing their work, and then we don't appreciate their work. Because that would be the opposite of the impression I want to give. But if it's the case that we could send it back to the planning commission, then, then say, great, we feel like we know more, or we feel like the chance for public input is greater, or we feel like a second, a second try at it would be beneficial, then it, then I'd like to send it back to the planning commission. So, so right now, I, I'd have to say that I, I know for sure what I don't want to do. I don't want to do the job of the planning commission, and for me, the question is, do we send it back to the planning commission or not send it back to the planning commission?
Council member Gastro, I just want to, um, jump off from your point. If the body does give it back to the city, to the planning commission, you should probably think of some strict parameters you want the planning commission to consider. Do they want to consider more landscaping, more aesthetics, do they want to consider different options, do they want to consider moving the, the, um, the, uh... Not the tower, the, the, the power, the power, um...
What, buildings?
Exactly, thank you, the accessory structure, the city attorney's giving me words, accessory structure into the pla, into the parking lot. You can give them some parameters on why you're sending it back to them. Um, I'm confident that the planning commission will appreciate, um, the consideration of that. Uh, uh, thank you so very much, and, you know, I believe that this particular agenda item is before us right now, um, because of some, some areas to consider. Uh, when the planning commission reviewed this particular project, I'm pretty sure they invested significant time in making their decisions. And, and they did a thorough review, not only in their meeting, but I'm pretty sure that they followed up with staff to, yes, ask their questions as it relates to this particular project. And when I look at the information that I have here, it says that the planning commission findings were just this. Um, that the use is compat, compatible with the neighborhood or the community, that the use is not detrimental to the health, safety, commands, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity, that the use complies with the performance standards according to section seventeen point two four point zero eight zero. And that the use is consistent with, um, the provisions of the particular zoning district. Um, and with policies and standards of the general plan. Now, this particular appeal was submitted based, based on these key areas. It was a conflict with the general plan, it was an environmental review, and it was based on the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. And based on the parameters set by the appeal, um, I just didn't hear any information come forward that was conflicting with the findings of the planning commission, and I was listening intently to hear just that. Uh, yes, we do have an opportunity to send it back, and, you know, I notated here, you know, it was mentioned by staff, more landscaping options, you know, moving the power accessory, the structure. I'm pretty sure that staff and everyone involved took all of that into consideration. And based on the review of the planning commission, you know, they came to a point where they did have findings, and their findings were to support this particular project. I'm really looking for some added value here and sending it back for another review. And I just don't see it. I don't see it. So, for me, um, I'm looking at supporting our planning commission, um, and upholding their decisions regarding this particular project. And, yeah, I've looked at the photos provided, and I've heard all of the key areas of concern, but, you know, at the end of the day, um, we cannot prevent... I mean, the underlying issue here is that, um, it's having a cell phone tower installed in the area, in the community, and we cannot prevent that from happening. And I, I think that with the review of staff and the property owner and the company coming to an agreement on what could work within the community, investing in green landscaping to help camouflage, um, the cell phone tower, and making sure that there are environmental mitigations in place is key to a successful project. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm apt to uphold the decision that was made, and, but, what I'll do is I'll, um, you know, check one more time with our, our council members that are here to see if they have any additional questions of everyone involved, which is staff, of the appellate, and, um, and, um, the applicant, before I close the public hearing. I'll check in with council member LeBaron. The questions, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have any additional questions.
Uh, thank you, council member Gastro?
Um, I think, well, I'm leaning, I'm leaning toward sending it back to the planning commission i, if we can find a couple really good, uh, parameters, or really good criteria for them to look at. I, I think that it, it would be a mistake to just say, oh, it has to go back to the planning commission without giving additional guidance. Um, I think the, the I, the basic idea of a cell tower in that part of Lemon Grove, I think is something that's, we can say is, is, is settled, that is, it's, it's it's something that has prior approval. Uh, I'm hesitant to send it back on the grounds of environmental, uh, impact, when we might possibly be considering housing or other things on the site, I mean, if we're concerned about the species, we wouldn't be building more housing there. So, it seem, it, it, it seems like if, if, if the concern was, if the concern was for the natural habitat, then we would be considering a cell tower or nothing. I mean, you see, I, uh, a, and, and, but, but what is it that, what would be the parameters of the discussion? Maybe the question of whether it could be in the parking lot is, 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 is up for discussion. And has the, I don't see the church represented here, I don't, has the church, is, are they part of this discussion? Uh, I, I'd be really interested to know, um, because if we were considering putting it in the church, the church would have an opinion about that. Uh, but that would be within the range of what I think would be productive, if there was some reason to think that the church would, uh, would appreciate it. It, it, so, so I'm inclined to send it back to the planning commission, provided we can come up with some guidelines that are clear and, and that, and that don't open up every possible question, but they narrow the range of questions.
Uh, thank you so very much, and that can be doable, uh, but again, it has to be a very narrow scope, and so outlining, you know, exactly what that is, that would require a discussion amongst us. And so, uh, what is the very narrow scope to send this particular project back to the planning commission? Um, I'll, I'll turn that over to you, council member Gastro?
The, the one person up here who hasn't been on the planning commission, um, I was on the school board, asking about education. Um, I, I wonder if, 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 and maybe, um, maybe Mr. Fellows could, could guide us, might, hey, let me throw something out that the, the specific location could be up for discussion, and, you know, the question of how we considered the church, how we considered the parking lot. That's just one, one idea I, I, I can come up with, but I think, I think Mr. Fellows might, maybe you can give us some suggestions, possibly?
And, uh, just for clarification, specific location of what, the tower or the, the box?
Uh, you know what, I think, I think we'd be talking about both the tower and the box, thank you for that.
Many, many of the items that have been brought up tonight were brought up in planning commission during the meeting. Um, there was no, uh, discussion regarding the location of the enclosure. Uh, part of that is because that is staff's preferred location, because we wouldn't want to lose parking, that's currently an unused area. Traffic flow in the parking lot, so that, that I said there, I think if there was an area, we'd be looking at an alternative to the tree. Um, there's been mention of, uh, steeple, uh, I used as part of the church. Um, and I think, I think having the scope narrowed down to, is the tree the, the best option, or is there an alternative, uh, location, or, or overall design that the planning commission would recommend, other than specifically a tree?
And I, I, I think by doing that, there's a possibility that they may lose parking, so just kind of keep that in consideration as well when narrowing the scope. And I'll, I'll check with council member LeBaron regarding, uh, a narrowed scope, to send this back to the planning commission? Uh, it seems like you're, if I'm understanding what you just said correctly, it sounds like you're advising me on what I should be saying next, or the input I should be saying next, and it... I'm not advising you on anything, um, what I asked was for your input regarding a narrow scope, if we send this back to the, to the planning commission.
Yes, okay, so, um, uh... My input regarding a narrow scope is that, that's not my intent, is to talk about a narrow scope, but that, that's... Yeah, or the, the kind of telling me to...
So then, for the record, you're saying that, um, you do not have any input regarding a narrow scope in sending this back? Is that correct?
I think it's accurate to say I don't have input regarding a narrow scope for giving directives to the, uh, planning commission at this point, I think that's accurate to say.
Uh, thank you so very much, and so, from what I have here regarding a narrowed scope, it's specifically looking at the tree and the enclosure and its location, if it were to go back to the planning commission, is that correct, council member Gastro?
Well, that's, that's what I'm hearing, I've, I've put different perspectives on the parking lot, and, and I, I'd be okay with leaving it up to the judgment of the planning commission as to whether, uh, encroachments on the pla, on the parking lot are appropriate or inappropriate. I don't, I don't really have an opinion about that, I suspect the church has an opinion about that. Uh, but they could be represented at a planning commission meeting, I'm sure. Uh, I'd be happy to send it back, uh, to the planning commission with the direction that they are considering the, the nature of the structure and the exa- the, the nature of the structure and the exact location of the structure.
Now might be a good time for me to remind you of what has to happen. There has to be unanimous vote of three, and I think you all understand that. If there is not a unanimous vote of three, then the planning commission's decision will stand. Okay, thank you. And, um, just to restate what the, the city attorney said is, if, if the three of us cannot agree tonight on a direction, then, um, the planning commission decision will automatically be upheld. Meaning that whatever they decided in the planning commission meeting will, um, will be the final decision. So it would take all three of us to agree to send it back to the planning commission. Otherwise, um, the, any, any change will fail and we'll move on to the next agenda item once we close the public hearing and make our final comments. So I just wanted to make that very clear. I do see Councilmember LeBaron's hand up. Um, you have some comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I actually want to clarify that we do not have to send this back to planning commission. So, for anybody who's a little bit confused, there's somebody who's appealing planning commission's decision. So tonight, we can agree with the appellant, Mr. Jason, or we can't. We do not need to agree to send this back to planning commission. We, we can just decide on whether we agree with him and don't allow the cellphone tower, or we don't agree with him and we allow the cellphone tower. So, it, it seems like that's a little muddy in what you're saying. You're suggesting that if all three of us don't agree, that we have to agree to send it back to planning commission? Earlier, I clarified that my intention is not to send this back to planning commission. That's how I feel at this point. I'm ready to deliberate and to make a decision on the merits of this case and whether we allow the cellphone tower to be built or not. I'm ready to move forward on that. And I'm ready to deliberate as to why I think this should be there or why I don't think this should be there. Actually, one last thing. That's not to say that I possibly won't agree to us sending this back to planning commission. However, we're, we're not forced to send this to planning commission. We can take action right now. We don't need to send this back to them. So, just want to clarify that.
Okay. So, rather than go back and forth, um, I actually stated what can and cannot happen. Uh, either way, either way, whatever decision is made, that decision needs to support three people. Otherwise, if we are all not in agreement with whatever it is, the planning commission decision will be upheld. And I think I want to make sure that everybody understands that. So, um, and given the conversation that has taken place in listening, it kind of seems like we're all not on the same page right now. So, if we were to, I'll say, read the tea leaves, what it's telling me is that this is going to be upheld. And so, by stating what can and cannot happen based on an agreement of three, I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that. So, you know, uh, we are ready to close the public hearing and have deliberations here. And so, um, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, second that, Madam Mayor? So that we can deliberate?
So then, I have a motion and...
I'll, I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. I'll ask our chief clerk to call the roll.
The motion was made by Councilmember LeBaron to close the public hearing, with a second by Councilmember Gastel. I want to conduct the roll, to call on the record. Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, aye.
Councilmember Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, thank you so very much. Now it is time for deliberations, and so I'll turn this over to Councilmember LeBaron.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Something that I can't agree to, to what you said earlier, was that it seems that we may not be in agreement at the present moment. Um, we do need to come to some sort of consensus, the three of us. That's why it's so beneficial that we discuss, right? Now we closed the public hearing portion, now that's exactly what all three of us are going to do here, folks. We are going to start discussing. My intent, like I already stated, is not to send this back to planning commission, rather to use our power and authority here and now to make a decision here and now on this, whether to allow this thing or not to allow this thing. That's my intent as of now. I can, you folks can persuade me. That's why we're going to discuss. Okay, maybe I can persuade you folks to agree with, let's just, uh, make our decision. This has been appealed to us, and let's move forward with the decision, either yea or nay. Maybe I can persuade you folks, but, but I'm going to talk, let's see. Okay. That's it. I do best when I write things down, and I have written stuff down. I can understand AT&amp;T's efforts to sell another product to the community. Like I said, we all have agendas, and AT&amp;T's is to make money by building a cellphone tower in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The reality is, our first responders already have communication lines they use that are not experiencing any issues. Matter of fact, as stated by the AT&amp;T rep himself, our small three-mile city already has ten-to-eleven electromagnetic frequency radiating towers in or around it. As the appellant states, people who live right next to the proposed project site that have AT&amp;T as their phone carrier have, quote, "excellent service." Like I said earlier, I've never heard anyone in Lemon Grove or in the project area say they suffer from bad cellphone service. I have, however, heard much of the community saying they are concerned by there being dozens of cellphone towers in their neighborhood. In order to grant the CUP, planning commission had to find the project met all of the four required findings, which are that this project, that the use, number one, that the use is compatible with the neighborhood or the community. Finding number two, that the use is not detrimental to the health, safety, convenience, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the vicinity. Number three, that the project, that the use complies with performance standards according to section seventeen point two four point zero eight zero. And number four, that the use is consistent with applicable provisions of the particular zoning district and with policies and standards of the general plan. All four of those findings need to be found, need to be met in order for the CUP to be granted. Now on further review, in this appeal, I do not believe that this project meets these findings. In La Jolla, Del Mar, Solana Beach, and Sanitas, seems that they must be technology-averse and large corporations much, must not think anyone can afford or benefit from these additional products and services because they don't have ten-to-eleven clusters of radiating towers within three miles of one another. In La Jolla, they must have a really selective aesthetic that is not able to be met by any reasonable designer because somehow their council representatives have succeeded in ensuring there aren't clusters of cellphone towers in their community. La Jolla, Torrey Pines, Del Mar is made up of a lot of canyons. So if we are following our city attorney's logic that was said earlier regarding the intent of companies trying to ensure that there's adequate cellphone coverage everywhere, and that's why the telecommunications act was passed by government back in the day, well, then, it would seem that companies would be erecting radiating towers in all of the houses over there in La Jolla, and Torrey Pines, and Del Mar, and Solana Beach, because given their geographic, I mean, I would assume that they have horrible service. By that logic, their cellphone service necessities would be much compromised to the point their governing boards are telling their constituents, "Our hands are tied. We have no discretion." Let me see, that doesn't make sense. So by that logic, their cellphone service necessity would be much compromised. And I can't see them saying, you know, "Our hands are tied. We have no discretion" every time a La Jolla resident aired their disapproval of the cellphone tower in their backyard. It was said earlier that we can't use health effects of radio frequency towers as a reason to deny projects like this from being built in backyards. However, I do want to remind us that as a body that's trusted to use our power and authority and our discretion to make decisions to protect our community, we can certainly find other reasons to deny anything that we think is not something good for our community. I mean, like I said earlier, if the community is for us, who can be against us? I mean, we have the community's millions and millions of dollars within our power. I don't see people complaining or I wouldn't imagine that people would complain if we used their money to protect them, to do things that they wanted. Speaking to the use is compatible with the neighborhood or the community, or the use is not detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare? Well, I'm going to pluck out two quotes that were said by the appellant today. He said that harms are financial. He also said that there will be a net reduction in property value to the surrounding homes. Common sense leads me to believe that that is true. As a property owner myself, I know that when I was looking for my home, I wasn't looking to live right next to the cellphone tower. And I want to say probably not a lot of other people are. So that certainly does seem to lend some evidence to what he says, that there will be a net reduction in property value to the surrounding homes. It makes those surrounding homes a little bit undesirable, which has, like he said, harms are financial, has financial consequences. Which directly ties to whether point two of what we have to do, the findings, the use is not detrimental to the health, safety, convenience. It's certainly not convenient to have your property values affected or general welfare. It is not in somebody's general welfare to affect their property value. People sell their homes, use that money to do things that affect their general welfare. They pass on their homes to their family, to their posterity, which then affects their general welfare. People rent in homes that are by this, them living there. This could affect their general welfare. So, I'm hoping that you two will consider what I've just said, the points that I've made, and some of the correlations I'm drawing, or some of the common sense things that I'm bringing up and speaking to logic, if I'm speaking to some of these points. Compatible with the neighborhood or the com-community? I would wager to say that having another cellphone tower in a neighborhood or community where there already is an abundance, ten-to-eleven cellphone towers within three miles. I don't think any more is really compatible to the neighborhood or the community. We can argue that point. But see, if tonight we exercise our discretion to use common sense and back what the community seems to be wanting, we can justify a no on this being built by citing just a couple of things that I just cited. And I tell you guys in support, so that you guys know that you guys are supported from the community and don't fear not having support. Someone who talks to a lot of people, I can tell you that you folks will be supported in a decision to deny the building of this cellphone tower. And I don't think there's going to be very many people who say, hey, you guys are putting us in jeopardy of be, of breaking the law or being sued or something. I think people will back us on this one based on, you know, what the community has said. Because this isn't the first time that I've presided over a hearing that had to do with the construction of a cellphone tower. And when I was on planning commission, I actually voted in favor of allowing a cellphone tower to be built, I believe it was on Skyline at a church. And there were plenty of people, more than today, there was only two people who left public comment today. There were more than that who came and expressed not wanting this in the community. So I'm just offering that knowledge that I have through my lived experiences on planning commission to give you guys ammo if you feel that you're scared of something, to know that the community seems to support us not allowing another cellphone tower. That's it for now. I think you, Councilmember Gastel?
Yeah, I I think this, this city in recent years has had significant discussion about the need for a planning commission and why we have a planning commission. I that's, that's probably why I'm so hesitant to do something that I think would be hearing to negate the role of the planning commission. Uh, the planning commission has the benefit of five people to focus on planning in the city and I mean, all they do is planning. Uh, whereas we have three people uh, up here who do, or I do things on behalf of the city and who appoint planning commissioners. And from my point of view, I can see sending it back to the planning commission because there's reason to think that they might appreciate another go at it. There's reason to think they might possibly improve on the decision. I, I really can't see, now the word I'm coming up with is not acceptable. I really can't see discarding, discard, uh, I, I can't see discarding the work of the planning commission. I can't see sending the potential project all the way back to square one with a message coming from the city that we don't want more cell towers. Because if we, if we want to send a message that we don't want more cell towers, or then we need to work on our general plan. We need to, there's work that we would need to do. And, and that, that kind of statement is beyond the scope of what, what I think that we should be considering here. So, I'm going to, I'm going to make a pitch for the idea of sending it back to the planning commission. And I, I, I'm willing to send it And I, I, I'm willing to send it back to the planning commission with no condition. I'm willing to just send it back to the planning commission. Because I I think we have a planning commission for a reason. I think we put a lot of time and energy into appointing planning commissioners. There's five of them. I think they're in a stronger position. And, and and I think that as long as we have a planning commission, we should be using our planning commission and getting the most benefit from our planning commission. So, so I'm gonna say that I'm, I'm willing to just send it back to the planning commission. Simply, simply do that. I'm willing, that, that's something I'm willing to do. And I, I, I'm not willing to, to discard. I'm not willing to just say no because, because it's a cell tower or no, I'm not willing to go there. I'm willing to work on the general plan. I'm willing to work on possibly in the future limiting the number of cell towers fine tuning the criteria. But, but after all the work that's put into this, I'm not willing to just say no because because Torrey Pines doesn't have a cell tower or something of that nature. That, that's not the place I wanna go. So I'm gonna suggest that we just simply send it back to the planning commission.
Thank you so very much. And I know that there was some discussion about studying Torrey amateurs when sending it back to the planning commission. Are you in support of sending those parameters? That recommendation came from staff.
I'm gonna say I'd like to send it back without conditions because I think that way we can get three votes and send it back to the planning commission.
Thank you so very much. You know, I, I want to actually find out from staff if that's reasonable to send it out, to send it back with no parameters. So I can support sending it back, but I just it is my hope that some really great dialogue in terms of what can be for this particular facility will move forward. I'm, I'm really, really I'm, I know that there is a push to say no to cell towers. That's really what this is all about. And it's not necessarily the location or whether or not it's a tree or a seaport or a tower. It's just I know that people in general want to say no to cell towers. And my hope is while no parameters will be set, that there will be good and healthy dialogue about what can be and that the folks who are on the planning commission and the community members that attend the meeting can come to a consensus. That's really what's important. There's one question that I did not ask. When we were, we were asking questions and, you know, is this, this particular project time sensitive? I don't know. But if it is time sensitive, then I hope that by sending it back we'll be able to meet the guidelines that are established for this particular project. So, you know, I can send it back and allow our planning commissioners to have another round of dialogue excuse me, regarding this particular project. And I think because the, the recommendation is that we uphold the planning commission decision, but do we need to either amend or motion in order to send this back?
I don't think you have a motion right now, but you need one. And so you would, you would have to make the motion to send it back to planning commission for further consideration.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we send, yeah, back to the planning commission for further consideration.
So that will be considered. A substitute motion?
It's just a motion.
It's just a motion? Okay. So we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Let the record reflect that the honourable Baron has raised her hand as a second to the motion.
Yes, but I could cast my vote myself. Thank you. I'm here present. Yes, I say let the people speak whether in favor or not about building yet another electromagnetic frequency irradiated cellphone tower.
We have a motion and a second?
Is that a second, Councilmember O'Bearon?
That is. Thank you.
I ask for a quick call to roll.
And just to clarify, the motion is to bring this item back to the planning, uh, planning commission with no conditions? That's correct?
That is correct.
All right. I will now conduct the vote on the record. Councilmember O'Bearon.
Uh, Councilmember O'Bearon, aye, given the temperature of the room, aye.
Councilmember Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on three ayes and two refusals.
I thank you so very much. Because it is now nine o'clock, we need to take a break so that not only the other members can return, but also a quick break for everyone and then we can resume any lunch other member for, thank you. And that break will be I have to break. Thank you. We will now resume the meeting and so I will turn this over to staff. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Permit the city council policies. Usually when we get to this hour, I check in with the city council and let you know that we, we've got several items still on the agenda that we need to discuss. One of the items is your next item, which is item number three. We need to have this discussion so we can continue or finish building out a sanitation budget so we know what what we will be loving as the district board. We need to have this item. I talked to the district director and he assured me that he will, he will go as fast as he can through this information. But staff is making the recommendation that the city attorney, the closed session of the city attorney performance evaluation be continued to the June fourth meeting as well as item one B, the payment demands that was pulled earlier. And continue these council reports to the fourth meeting and, and I will work with the mayor to extend the time to maybe three to four minutes for everybody to, to give their double reports. If the council is in agreement with that, I need a motion with all of those words and a second, please.
I, I'd like to move that we do what you said.
Seconds?
So the motion on the floor, motion on the floor was made by Councilmember Gastel with a second by Councilmember Snow. And I will now conduct the vote to go on the record. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Bearon?
Councilmember O'Bearon, aye.
Councilmember Gastel?
Aye.
Mayor Quoten Mendoza? Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
The motion carries on a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you so very Okay, yeah, thank you so very much. We will move on to item number three on the agenda tonight. And so item number three is. The annual sanitation district rate analysis. I'll turn this over to Izzy Mordea, our public records director, to present the staff report.
Good evening, district chair and members of the board. The item before you this evening seeks the board's direction on staff's recommendation on sewer rate adjustments for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. Next slide is. On May second, twenty twenty three, the sanitation district board approved a three percent rate increase for four consecutive years from fiscal year twenty four, twenty five through fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight. At the time of the approval, the board expressed an interest in receiving an annual report that considers any reduction in the recommended rate if financially feasible. In support of this effort, the district engaged Dexter Wilson Engineering Incorporated to review the proposed rate increases in light of two changed conditions from the sewer rate study conducted by Harrison Associates, which was approved by the district board. Before we delve into the analyses, let's first review some background information to provide context for our discussion this evening. Next slide, please. So as alluded, every five years, in Monongrove Sanitation District undertakes a sewer rate study that evaluates its existing wastewater cost of service, sufficiency of revenues generated from current service, service, current sewer service charges, and the rate structure applied to sewer customers. Essentially, what we're looking at is whether or not rates are sufficient to sustain ongoing operating maintenance costs, debt service obligations, um, and, uh, whether that, those rates are able to maintain adequate reserves. Uh, we also look at the rate, rate structure, whether or not it aligns with revenue needs, and whether or not the rate structure promotes financial sustainability while providing fair and reasonable rates to our customers. January twenty twenty three, staff received direction from the board to finalize the sewer root study that changed the commercial customer rate structure from a man use base to a volume based structure, also known as a consumption based structure. Residential customers remain the same on a, uh, E U or a man use basis. There's no change to the residential rate structure. In April, twenty twenty three, the board introduced ordinance number thirty three, which includes the basis for the sewer service charges and proposed rates through fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight. And, uh, the board adopted the ordinance on May second, twenty twenty three. Next slide, please. The table on this slide represents the rates adopted with a maximum of, uh, with a maximum three percent rate increase through fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight. On this chart, you can see the rate for E U, um, which for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four is six hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty cents. With the rate, with the proposed three percent rate increase, that would go up to six hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-six cents, uh, all the way to seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-three cents through fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight. And again, uh, this is the proposed rate structure that the council adopted as, uh, from the five-year sewer rate study last year. And it's included in ordinance number thirty three. Next slide, please. The table on this slide, uh, provides a six-year history on adopted sewer rates. The previous five-year sewer rate study provided for a five and three-quarters maximum rate increase as part of the board's annual rate analysis from fiscal year twenty eighteen through nineteen, sorry, from fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen through fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. The adopt, uh, the board adopted, uh, a lesser rate, uh, in the amount of two point eight seven five percent, uh, through fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. In fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, there was no, no rate increase. This was the first year, uh, where staff undertook or began to undertake the revised five-year sewer rate study. Again, there was no rate increase, uh, this year, at fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Uh, staff at the time made the recommendation that no rate increase should occur as the district was converting the commercial class structure from a man use base to a consumption based, um, rate structure. And so in order to see the results of that, that, um, uh, structure change and to limit the impacts of commercial class cus- customers, uh, we did not adopt a rate increase this year. Slide, please. For point comparisons, uh, this slide represents sewer rate studies, uh, sewer rates, uh, for surrounding agencies, uh, or neighboring agencies, wa- wastewater surrounding agencies. And, uh, um, you know, with Pottery Dam, uh, leading the pack, followed by the city of Imperial Beach, followed by Monongrove. With Oak Tyewater District having, uh, the lowest rates of, of, um, these comparable cities and, and agencies. Next slide, please. Next two slides are just, uh, for point of reference for the board. Uh, it's a summary, a high-level summary of the sanitation, uh, district budget. Uh, so this slide here represents revenues, uh, which, as you can see, the middle, um, the middle category, uh, sewer service charges make up, uh, most of the, uh, revenues that the district, uh, depends on. Next slide, please. And this slide, again, is a high-level overview of the district's expenditures, with a little bit over two point three million in general operating expenditures, uh, followed by a little bit over eight million dollars in capital improvements, and close to three point two million in metro operating costs. This includes, uh, the city's an- annual contribution or, uh, expenditure contribution for the conveyance of sewage and the treatment of our sewage, which all goes to the Point Loma Water Treatment Plant. And then, uh, bottom, uh, currently, we're not contributing any, or transferring any cost from pure, the pure water reserve, reserve to our operating maintenance budget. All right, next slide, please. Now with all that background information, uh, behind us, now we can delve into the sewer rate analysis. As mentioned earlier, the analysis, which is included, uh, the full analysis is included as part of your agenda materials as attachment A. The sewer rate analysis looks at alternatives regarding ordinance number thirty three, or looks at alternatives regarding the recommended rate increases for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. So essentially, uh, the rate analysis takes into consideration three, uh, analyses, and those analyses are, are looked at over a twenty-year period, period. Uh, and, uh, with the whole purpose of, of it being, um, whether any of the recommended scenarios, uh, are they, uh, financially feasible? So, analysis number one. Analysis number one looks at, uh, continuing with a three percent rate increase as called out in the sewer rate study, uh, for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, and through, um, the sewer rate study period, which ends in fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight. It also assumes that, uh, the board will begin to draw down about approximately, uh, five hundred thousand dollars a year in the pure water program reserve funds until funds are exhausted. And again, that's because, uh, the district will begin to incur pure water program costs. Third, it assumes that the district will continue, continue to maintain, uh, its capital reserve fund at one point five million dollars a year. Analysis number two looks at no rate increases for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. It is important to note that it assumes a three percent increase for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, and beyond. It also, uh, looks at drawing down the pure water program reserves at five hundred thousand dollars a year until funds are exhausted. And, uh, similarly, looks at contributing one point five million dollars to its capital fund reserve through the twenty-year rate period. Analysis number three, uh, similar to analysis number one, looks at continuing a three, uh, percent rate increase for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, and beyond. Uh, the difference with analysis number three with the other, with the previous two is that, um, it assumes that the delay, or it assumes that the district would delay drawing down pure water reserve funds until twenty thirty instead of now. Um, and the reason for that is, uh, there's an assumption that our current operating maintenance budget would absorb, could absorb, absorb any, in, any pure water costs. And secondly, um, the analysis looks at, uh, by delaying the, um, delaying the drawdown till twenty thirty, the district would be able to, um, obtain additional revenue through interest rates or through interest from that six point two million dollar, uh, pure water reserve fund that we have. And then, um, uh, it also assumes that, uh, when pure water phase two, uh, begins, which is estimated to be completed in the twenty thirty-nine, twenty forty timeframe, that by delaying the, uh, pure water reserve fund drawdown, that you'd be able to absorb some of the phase two, um, costs at that later point. Okay, so, uh, the next several slides examines the resulting wastewater fund balances under each analysis, which helps us assess the impact that each analysis has on future financial picture of the district, and, uh, helps us determine whether any reduction in the, uh, in the recommendation, uh, is, is financially feasible. And so, um, you know, there's a lot of numbers, uh, trying to best represent, uh, and summarize the analysis. So, uh, we look at, uh, four time periods through each, for each analysis. We look at the any, overall any fund balance, and we also, um, look at, um, the, um, the increase in the operating fund balance after each year. Um, so analysis number one, uh, just to highly summarize for, um, fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, the, um, uh, operating budget would, would have an ending balance of seven point four million. Um, twenty seven, twenty eight, that, this period is looked at because it represents the end of the five-year rate study. Um, and then we look at twenty four, twenty thirty-four, thirty-five, because it's the, uh, ten-year, it's ten years from now. Uh, so it gives you a good indication kind of in the short term or near short term, uh, what the financial status of the district would be, uh, if we undertook the analysis number, uh, undertake, uh, each of the analyses. And then, uh, fiscal year twenty forty-one slash forty-two is the end of the twenty-year, uh, analysis. So, uh, analysis number one, um, essentially, uh, represents a financially feasible, uh, um, option. Um, at the end of the, this, at the end of the twenty years, uh, the district would have an ending fund balance of fourteen point four million dollars. Again, this is estimated, you know, when you're doing the twenty-year rate study, there's a lot of variables that occur, can occur from now until then, but, um, that is the, the, the estimated based on the information that we know today. The, with analysis number one, we would actually have about a million dollars difference, uh, in operation from our operating, uh, revenues and our expenditures, which is, you, you can't see that number here, but, uh, uh, at the twenty seven, twenty eight mark, um, the difference between operating and expenditures would be close to half a million dollars. And then at the ten-year mark, twenty-three, twenty thirty-four slash thirty-five, uh, again, it would hold stable with, um, you know, we would end the, the year with a half a million dollars, uh, in, in the black. Uh, but when you get to the, the four-year mark, um, uh, even with the three percent rate increase, uh, through the years, uh, we're actually looking at a half a million dollar deficit between what we're collecting in revenues and our expenditures, and that's mostly because of, uh, capital or the pure water, uh, phase two costs are expected to jump up to like a million bucks. Scenario two, um, again, if you're looking at the ending fund balance, um, for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, not that much difference from scenario one. Uh, when you get to the ten-year mark, we're looking at about difference of, um, in, in the ending fund balance, about a million bucks. And then, when you get to the twenty-year mark, that's where you see really the discrepancy, um, where scenario one is estimated to have a fund balance of fourteen point four million, uh, and then scenario two is nine point seven million dollars. So you can see, um, you know, the financial impacts long-term by delaying the three percent rate increase. When you're looking at, uh, uh, each year in, in deficits and, and balances, uh, fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, estimated to have three-quarters of a million dollars in, as a, as a fund balance. At the ten-year mark, that shrinks to, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. At the ten-year mark, again, it's hold stable, just like in scenario one, at two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, dollars. Again, this is the difference between expenditures and revenues. And then when you get to the twenty-year mark, um, that difference is a deficit of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars again because uh, of the cost for not only, uh, phase one, but also phase two of the pure water program. Last week. Uh, scenario three, next slide, please. Scenario three, again, this is, uh, this assumes the same thing as scenario one, except for the delay of the drawdown for the pure water, uh, reserve, uh, and that not being implemented until twenty thirty. Um, similar to scenario one, um, you know, you're, you're ending, uh, you have fund balance of six, almost seven million dollars, uh, next year. The operating difference, uh, is about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. At the ten-year mark, twenty seven, twenty eight, any fund balance is six point seven million, uh, and the, uh, difference between operating revenues and expenditures, um, based on the assumptions here, we would be ending that year with twelve thousand dollars in, in fund balance. And, um, again, that's because you're not, in, in this scenario, um, you're not relying on the pure water reserve costs or, or transfers into, uh, the operating maintenance costs. You're delaying that until twenty thirty. So your any fund balance is a lot, um, less than what it would be in scenarios one or two. Twenty, uh, thirty-four, thirty-five, uh, ending fund balance, eleven million bucks. And then, uh, you would end the year with a balance of five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, again, this is, it would be a couple of years now where we would be drawing down the pure water reserve fund. And at the twenty-year mark, um, you'd have a ending fund balance of thirteen point seven million dollars and a. you'd have an ending fund balance of 13.7 million dollars and a deficit of 34,000 dollars, which again, in comparison is miniscule. But it really shows the impact of delaying the Pure Water cost program or Pure Water reserve transfers. Next slide please. Now given with all this information in all the various scenarios, staff is in support of a no rate increase for fiscal year 24, 25. If you want to note that with the, not assumption, but I can't think of another word, but I'll use assumption here, or contingent upon that the future years have a 3% rate increase for 25, 26 through the five-year rate study. Again, this is because of what the analysis results in. And there are various reasons why staff's in support of this option. Our operating and maintenance expenses are budgeted for 23, 24, are expected to remain the same for fiscal year 24, 25. Our projected expenses for 23, 24 are anticipated to be less than what we budgeted for various reasons. We have salary savings and and our delays in our CID project implementation have left the district with more revenue than we previously had projected. The district continues to face uncertain revenue implications from transitioning to a consumption-based structure for commercials. So we're still seeing the impact of that change. While, and I wouldn't say there have been major negative or adverse effects, but we're still trying to understand what that revenue picture is on the commercial side. And so, you know, for those various reasons, we are supportive of a no rate increase or a reduction of a rate increase from the 3% plans. Next slide please. Depending on council's consideration, deliberation this evening, our next steps follows. Staff will take the board's feedback and relay the recommendation to Harrison Associates, who is our engineer, who does our sewer rate engineer reports. They will plug in that rate scenario or recommend a rate increase or no increase into the engineer's report to provide a rate that could then be levied. At the next council meeting, June 4, 2024, would be, staff would present a resolution of intention. So we get the board's direction this evening. Next council meeting, we would come before, or the item would be before the board indicating the proposed rate for 24, 25. And there would be a recommendation to introduce an engineer's report that would allow us to express our intention to our customers that we intend to levy that rate. June 18 would be our public hearing where the board will formally consider the rate adoption and approval of the engineer's report. Upon consideration and potentially approval, that would set the rates in effect for July 1st. That's when the rates will become effective. For the month of July, we'd work with Harrison Associates to compile the information and ensure all the proposed rate increases or proposed levy rates get to the county in a timely manner or their tax roll preparation by the August 10th timeframe for the levy and the assessment of those sewer service charges to hit the tax roll, property tax rolls in the fall, winter of this current calendar year. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you so very much. And so I'll check with our, to see if we have any speaker slips on this item.
Madam Mayor, we have no speaker slips for this item.
Thank you so very much. And I will check with our council members to see if they have any questions of staff. And that's two questions back, starting with council members now.
In the previous analysis that you provided, on the third analysis, it assumes that we withhold drawing down the Pure Water funds. And during that interim period, we could be collecting interest or other investment resources from that 6.2 million. Is that calculated and the potential amounts that we might be able to receive as revenue from the investment of that 6.2 million? Is any of that included in analysis three?
All right, yes, it is.
Okay. And how much did we think that we could recover in potential investment by investing that 6.2 million rather than drawing down on it?
Give me a second while I look up that number, but just to clarify, it would be investment, investing. It would just, you know, be withholding on to it, earning interest in, you know, whatever account that it's being held in.
We know with the council members now, I might be able to help answer that question as he looks for the specific numbers that was used by the engineer that did this analysis. Our investments and our interest earning investments are fairly conservative. Right now, we invest in what they call LEAF, which is a state fund sort of savings account. And because, and we'll have this discussion tomorrow as well. But because money is expensive right now, our LEAF rate has gone up. So we're getting about a three and a half percent. Normal days, our LEAF rate is probably one or maybe 0.01%. And we barely make any investment on that. We do have long-term CDs that some of our money is in, but those still, even in the, right now, we're earning about four and a half percent. But in days yonder, when we had 0% interest rate and money was fairly cheap to lend, our interest rate was actually smaller. So when money is more expensive, our interest rates go up. When money is less expensive, our interest rate goes down. So depending on interest as a form of revenue, probably shouldn't, we should not be looking at that because it wouldn't generate enough revenue to help fund a budget gap. Or it could use for one-time expenses.
So my consideration of analysis three really depends on on how much money we would be able to, like, would we be exceeding the gaps? And is it a better use of our money to use the drawdown now and keep it at the 3% rate? Or is it better to hold on to those funds because right now we're making 4.5% on it? Do we have to, are we committed and locked in and we can't touch those for until 2030? Or can we revisit, like, this year we do it? We don't use any drawdown friends from Pure Water. And because we can make more money with it sitting in there, so instead of raising it 3% on the people, can we let the 4.5% that is increasing this year cover any potential gaps that we have? And then there was an analysis for where it provided for no 3% and no drawdown.
So I'm going to let him talk about the various specific numbers in this analysis and Mr. Mordecai will be there. But to use interest savings to say fund ongoing expenses, probably not a fiscally prudent act to do. You usually will use your one-time savings or your one-time interest rate to say provide a capital expense or to purchase a one-time equipment expense. Because the next year, if the feds change your money, that will go down. And now you've created an ongoing expense based on revenue we know we're not going to get. That makes it, be clear. Interest earning, you've got to look at it as one-time money. Interest earnings are volatile in the marketplace depending on what the feds do. And if the feds announce tomorrow that they're cutting the interest rate to zero, those interest rates that we've been earning to date will go down subsequently. And we won't have that money to account for ongoing expenses.
So right now, we're estimating that we're drawing down 500,000 dollars from Pure Water. Would the six, like, 4.5% for one year be equal to or greater than 500,000 dollars?
No, it would not. Councilmember Gobert. Well, my initial reaction to all of this is this is a lot of information. Is it a long process? And I'm going to let my council colleagues ask their questions and see how it goes in the next round in terms of questions. Thank you, Ms. Hill, for your questions, by the way. Councilmember Grasso.
Councilwoman Grasso asked the best question, so I'm going to, I thought a couple. First of all, I think what I'm hearing is that analysis two is what staff thinks is the wisest course of action. Though appreciate the fact that they're leaving it up to us to say what the wisest course of action is. Because I think that what I'm hearing is that we don't need an increase for 24, 25 and that it might be prudent to draw down in Pure Water reserves. So that's kind of what I'm looking at and I'm trying to, you know, so I'm thinking that that's probably where where we're headed and is that, you know, I want to make sure I understand why that would be, why that would be good. So my first question is, what's the benefit of delaying the rate increase? Because in my experience, if you're expecting to increase rates, it's often smart to just bite the bullet and, you know, if we, like, for, just put out a hypothetical, what if we increased the rate 2% for 24, 25? Would that make it so that we wouldn't have to go as high as 3% for the subsequent years? You know, because if you start earlier on a rate increase, then you don't have to raise it as much percentage-wise later on. And so again, my first question is, what would be the wisdom in waiting? Is there, is there wisdom in waiting on the rate increase? And the other question I think would be, am I correct in thinking that that we're probably fine with drawing down the Pure Water program? Because I think that's where I, I just want to check on that, whether that, whether that we're feeling good, that it's good about that. And maybe I'll throw in that I'm really glad that all of the scenarios include number three funding the capital or is there... Sorry if those weren't all questions, but I think just two questions.
Okay, so the benefit from delaying the rate increase, you know, again, with the board's and social practice of reviewing whether or not we need to increase, we're coming before the board and saying that we don't. However, per the analysis, if there is no rate increase adopted for fiscal year 24, 25, we are looking at the 3% rate increase for the subsequent years. Going somewhere between 3% and zero does alleviate, I guess, the the impact, the future impact to adopt 3% in subsequent years. You're not going to have to go up to 3% each year. And so that's why in the presentation, I kind of gave that nuanced response that we're supportive of no rate increase for fiscal year 24, 25 for the various reasons that were outlined. One, because, you know, staff believes it's fair to the customer. However, we're doing so, we're supportive of that, contingent upon the board recognizing that those rates would have, will have to be adopted in subsequent years. I think that's your first question. The second question in regards to Pure Water, yes, the Pure Water Reserve was set up for the particular reason of offsetting the Pure Water costs. That's the whole reason why the board had set up those costs. And the district is facing, or will be facing, those, the Pure Water costs starting in fiscal year 24, 25. I think about somewhere in the 374,000 dollar range. And so you're utilizing a fund that the board set up for this various reason. You know, analysis three was just like, well, what if it's based off of current operating revenues? You could absorb Pure Water costs. And so I just looked at what that possible would be. But again, you would be utilizing reserves that were perfect or established for this very reason and that data is come. Thank you.
Mayor Timon does it?
I was just showing, Councilmember Grasso that I wrote down exactly that same question he just asked. The purpose of the reserve is to pay the Pure Water costs. It's not like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. That's why we save his money. And, you know, this isn't, it's my understanding, this isn't a tax, it's a fee that we vote on every five years. And if we don't, if we don't need the money, why charge our citizens extra money? And that's why we set it up the way we did so that if we do need to increase it by 3%, because we're running low or we have a big Pure Water payment we have to make, the money, you know, we have the ability to do that if we need to. But if we don't need to, let's not pardon the people who have already, are announced COVID. I'm not telling you this because you are here to make this decision. And I don't know if you all read it recently, but there was an article in the UT, I think about a month ago, that they're thinking of delaying Phase Two. And the reason being is that customers are conserving water so much that they might not need as much capacity term as they thought they did. And so the article said it would be, it would be a year for them to make that analysis. So I think that we're being prudent with not doing an increase this year because there may be a decision to, I mean, they're talking about not even having it in Mission Valley, they might do it somewhere else. So it's really kind of, it's a little up in the air right now. Now, they were saying, oh, we're expecting all these cost overruns and we're going to have to build a bigger plant and we're going to have to move it somewhere and it's going to cost a whole lot more money. Then I would say, hey, Then I would say, hey, we better be careful here, but no, it's, it's, we're saying we might have, like, maybe we don't need to process that much. So I'm sorry, that's not really a question. Those are, those are comments.
Mayor Potemendosin, I, I do want to remind the board that we did set up the pure water reserve fund, knowing that we were going to do what they call a PEGO, which means we weren't going to finance it, so the rate payers would have to create a financing mechanism. This, the board years previous decided to continue to do a three percent rate increase so we can tuck away some of this money to pay pure, uh, pure water phase one, not pure water phase two. We were supposed to start paying actually earlier than have, than we are going to be paying because the city of San Diego was able to get a low interest and some grant monies that offset some of the costs of pure water for the metro JPA cities. So I think we're, we're in a good position to continue with that PEGO model and not burden the rate payers additionally because we've already said we gave that money to full pure water that the metro JPA cities have to contribute.
Uh, thank you so very much. I, um, just kind of want to think out loud over here. Um, I'm, I'm sorry. You know, I'd really like to know the true value of the zero percent rate increase. And, you know, if there's value in spreading it out over a period of the rate study and sending it back to consultant for another look. So I just kind of like to hear staff chime in on that.
I need a clarification on your question, Mayor. Are you asking if, if the board decides instead of doing a zero percent rate increase or one percent rate increase, take it with that scenario we take a look at? And in how that scenario would play out over the same analysis that we did? Is that the question you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. We would have to go back to the consultants to do that, which would sort of put us a little bit behind of us proposing a budget to the city council or the, or sanitation, or excuse me, the board for the sanitation system. Because what we, we need to have a determination to unite is what our revenue is going to look like. So we can present the budget to the board at our June fourth meeting for adoption at our June eighteenth meeting. So if we want to hold off, we, we can do a formal adoption of the budget at your July second meeting, which is still permissible. And we will then have to just free up some of the other work that is backed up to get it on the tax rolls by the timeframe that the director had stated.
And I would be willing to do a special meeting for that. But I think maybe just sending it back to the consultant and taking another look might be of value.
If that is the board's direction, we can certainly do that.
Uh, thank you. I'll do another round of questions here and ask two questions for council members, starting with council members now.
So I don't have any other questions. I'll just provide some comments. I, I think at this point, I think I'm in support of moving ahead with analysis two. And I think that it's going to help people at a time when we desperately need to keep some money in our pockets to help people keep a little extra in their pockets. Based on this, I ran the numbers myself, but I, I agree. I think we can do it in using pure water drawdowns as we had, you know, as the council back in the day had the foresight to do. I think that that is a prudent choice. It locks us into three percent going forward, but that was something that we were, we found palatable in the past and I'm still in support of that. It's merely fortuitous at this stage that we don't have to raise rates and for the same reasons that Councilmember Vindosan indicated. The water rates aren't where they used to be and so there are some murmurings that water rates may increase to cover expenses because the water consumption hasn't been where it was in the past. So if we are looking at potential increases in water rates, all the more reason to, to hold to this zero mark now.
Councilmember O'Barron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with your desire to have us look at it a little bit more. I mean, as city manager stated, this is something that needs to be decided on quickly and it seems like this is kind of, this is very important stuff. I mean, we're on the board of this district. There's a lot of money we're talking about. So I'd be in support of what you suggested, Madam Mayor. Like I said earlier, this is a lot of information. And I'm getting the sense that this is a pretty rushed situation just based on what city manager's saying, like, this has to happen right? We have to do this now, which is a little bit strange because, I mean, this is, we're being presented this right now and being told we need to decide on this right now or it's like, that's it. But this is also very important to me. So I'd agree with you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if I have, do I have the support of, or do we have the support of any of our, any of the other council members at now? Desire that the mayor put forward?
Well, I'll, I'll continue on with the other council members and allow them to chime in regarding their thoughts. And then, you know, we can continue our conversation forward. So I'll call on Councilmember Gaskell.
Yeah, I'm, I feel like I'm ready to support option two. And, you know, and I, when I raised the, the question about would there be any benefit to starting, you know, starting to increasing it now with the idea that we wouldn't have to increase it as much later? I think, I think that people have spoken to that pretty well. I think that that we are, we are, we haven't completely recovered from, from COVID and, and probably there's some benefit to waiting. And usually I'm the one, I'm the sort of first that wants to like, if you're going to do something, start doing it. But once in a while, there's a good reason to, to wait, especially since we don't feel we need more money right now. And if it, I mean, if we were looking at ten percent increases in future years, I would say, no, start with five and, you know, and then you won't have to, but, but three percent really is a modest kind of percentage increase. And, and so I, I think that, I think that we could wait on, on that. I, I have to say I'm fine with analysis two. I'm not really against having the consultants look at it again, but I'm not feeling the need. I think I read this report about two or three, I read a report about two or three weeks ago with the analysis. So this is, I remember reading it for, because I'm taking a class in public finance and, and I was, I was going through it and writing, actually wrote about it for my class. So this is not looking new to me that I give the, of the three percent increase for subsequent years. So I guess that's, that's where I am. I'm ready to support option two, but not really again, I'm not against sending it back. There's really good reasons to send it back.
I thank you so very much. And Mayor Potemendosin?
For the reasons I previously stated, I'm, I'm in favor of moving ahead with staff's recommendation. And it, are we in, are we in year two or three of the five-year rate increase?
We're currently in the first year, so we're, what we're proposing is for the second year.
What we're proposing is for the second, okay. So, you know, we, I don't feel this is rushed at all because we had a very detailed discussion of this last year at this time. So this isn't really anything new. It's just you're updating us with the kind you know, what the expenses and income are for the year. So, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to move ahead with staff's recommendation.
Uh, thank you. And while I hear option number two is quite popular, I just want to let everyone know that option number two could definitely make it more expensive later. So, you know, that is a given. But I do know that, you know, a zero percent increase is most popular with most. But again, by doing that, you're going to make everything expensive later. So if everyone would like to go with the two percent, but I'm just putting on the record, it's going to make things more expensive. It is. So it is my statement and I stand firm on it. And so those are my comments. And so with this particular agenda item, you know, where, where do we want to go with this?
Do you need a motion or?
Yes. So yeah, for this particular
I apologize, like, my computer, my, my computer power went out.
So I, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but it is a discuss and advise. And if we're hearing, yeah, it should be a motion, discussion.
It's received, required by the motion.
And that's, that's a discuss and advise. So we, we hear that we've got at least three votes or three guesses in head time that we go with scenario two. And we can move forward with that, that scenario, with that, while we look at building the budget for the coming year.
Director, do you have anything to leave?
Yes.
And I'll say no pun intended here, you know, I guess I'll go with the flow. Yeah, that's at, um, let's see, after ten o'clock at night. So, um, um, we are, we've provided our input to staff and we've moved items to our next city council meeting. Our official city council meeting. Just know that we do have a special workshop of the city council tomorrow here at the community center, starting at five thirty PM, to set our strategic priorities for next year. And that our regular scheduled city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-four at six PM. And this meeting is now adjourned.